Great, it is now five o'clock, so we are ready on your end. Madam Chair, when you are ready, we can get started and everybody who is on our different audiences will be able to see this meeting in its entirety.
Thank you so much, Pat, I appreciate it. And Joe from the city, we really appreciate your help as well. So, welcome to the October 22 special school board meeting, 2020, I should say, as well. And this meeting is being held by Zoom because of the emergency order that the governor put out in March. And so we're doing this by Zoom. The first order of business is call to order. Ms. Green, are we called to order?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Okay, we're gonna have a moment of silence as we do at the beginning of the meeting, so I'm just gonna go ahead and have that at this moment. Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. And now we're gonna do the roll call.
Hey, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Bryson Morseburger.
Here.
Dr. Kraft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perrier.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Mr. Wade said he would be a few minutes late.
Okay, great, thank you so much. He'll be joining us when he's ready. And so the first thing, the next thing is the approval of the agenda. Everybody's received a copy of that, I assume.
I move that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, um, I guess we'll do the, we'll vote now, okay. Ms. Green.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger.
Yes.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, that has passed our agenda. So the next item on the agenda is the comments from members of the community. The school board, the City Charlottesville School Board welcomes comments from the community. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you state your name and your address at the beginning of your comments. So, Mr. Cuomo, I'm going to rely on you to, you know, bring in some people for the, for comment.
Sure thing, Madam Chair. So we did have a number of people ask to sign up to provide public comment prior to the meeting, and I would just ask if those members and attendees are participating tonight through the Zoom meeting, that they let me know by either raising their hand, using the raise hand feature on the chat side of thing, on the participants' side of the house, or they, they write a message in the chat that just lets us know they would like to speak during this public comment time, and then I will announce their name and unmute them for, for that duration of time. So I'm looking, looking for hand raises and I do not see any. I do see someone, here we go. Okay, I've got Angel Fero who is able to unmute at this time.
Hi, Angel Fero, my address is on Prospect Avenue. Dear Madam Chair and Board, thank you all again for your hard work and time. It is so appreciated. I know that the COVID Committee has recommended a January reopening of schools. I also know there is not much I can say that will heavily influence your decisions. However, this summer, we heard the concerns of a small cohort of teachers who pushed for an all-virtual start, although the superintendent was prepared to offer families more options. Many families were put into extremely stressful situations as a result. Now imagine this whole situation is very confusing for some children whose parents must go to work in person, while our city has deemed it too unsafe for their teachers to teach in person. What message is being communicated when children in learning centers wearing masks all day see their classmates comfortably at home with the support of a parent? They're daily reinforcing the disparities between these children and their more privileged classmates when we could have worked much harder for a way to accommodate all families' needs. Around the country, there are areas with higher rates of positivity than Charlottesville, offering in-person school options. It seems to have become more of a political issue and less about the safety and learning needs of our children, and that saddens me deeply. This conversation began in July, and we spent so much energy planning for a virtual start that some of our school buildings are still not ready to reopen. I pray this will not be the case in January. If we are going to continue making children, families, and those helping to support them endure the challenges and stress that virtual learning brings to many, I ask that you and Dr. Atkins, please consider the following changes during these next two months. First, begin to offer some in-person options for more than just special education students on a case-by-case basis. We have evidence from learning centers, private schools, and daycares that this can be done safely. Second, shorten the virtual day for our youngest learners. Elementary students do not need a 9:30 to 3:00 p.m. day for online instruction. For many, this results in Zoom fatigue concerning behaviors such as emotional outbursts and defiance, and also requires a lot of support from a nearby adult. And lastly, provide recordings of all synchronous lessons and offer more off-screen options for independent work. The school division has the opportunity to be a lot more accommodating to families. Equity involves options and flexibility. Please deeply consider these suggestions. They are based on our families, our staff, the volunteers, and my experiences every day helping children access virtual learning. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fero, appreciate your comments and all of that you're doing for our students. Who is next, Mr. Cuomo?
We have Richard, Fera has his hands raised at this time, he's able to unmute.
Okay, Mr. Fera, you have three minutes.
Hey, y'all, I'm also on Prospect, just like Angel. Thank you, School Board and Dr. Atkins. I'm grateful for that Charlottesville has a comprehensive plan for in-person education moving forward. I'm excited that Charlottesville will be joining the many school systems across the country that found a way to provide safe-in-person education for the students that need it. So, thank you to everyone who served on those teams. I appreciate all the hard work and time you put into that, and I look forward to working together to get this off the ground. Um, the last I heard, CCS still hasn't provided clarity to teachers and families for how they will, how this year will be assessed. Um, and I'm sure that's a crazy hard task to figure out with little precedent to guide us, but uh, but I ask that uh, that we all find grace and clarity for this topic soon. I think this would ease a lot of tension and anxiety for teachers and students as they work in extremely hard and nearly impossible circumstances. Um, so I just have one request of, as well for this, the end of virtual education for everyone. And um, and that is that students wouldn't be required to retrieve something from their home or receive instruction while moving about, making facial expressions while on camera, because these are discriminatory learning activities for students in learning centers who can't get out of their seats and who must all, must always wear masks and headphones. Um, so I just ask that, as we move forward, that we make that change to the virtual education. Thank you for your time, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Fera. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo?
So at this time, there are no other attendees with their hands raised, and there are no other chats indicating people would like to speak during public comment, so I will turn it back to you for any final, final words before moving on.
Okay, so we're gonna give a minute for anybody who would like to raise their hand. In the meantime, I'm gonna talk and indicate that we also have a public comment section at the end of our meeting. And, you know, especially to those who, others who did sign up or register to say that they wanted to have a public comment that will be available to you at the end of the meeting. And, of course, we're always available by email at schoolboard@charlottesvilleschools.org. And we receive comments that way as well as this opportunity for public comment and the one at the end of the meeting. We also have a meeting on November 5th. If you missed this meeting for some reason. Okay, I think that was like 35 seconds, so we could probably move on. Anybody raise their hand?
There is, there is nobody with their hand raised at this time or has made a comment in the chat to speak.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Cuomo, for your help there, and I think we're gonna move on the agenda, close public comment for this moment. And then the next item is items for discussion, and Dr. Atkins is going to introduce the topic of our COVID-19 Advisory Committee update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On September the 23rd, we convened a COVID-19 Advisory Committee to discuss return to learn in our school division. The committee was divided into three work groups, an elementary, secondary, and a facilities work group. And tonight, we'd like for the co-chairs of those work groups to present to the board their recommendations. I will introduce all three groups of co-chairs for those work groups, and then they will go in the order of introduction. So the first group will be our elementary group, and we have Christine Esposito, who is one of our wonderful teachers at Johnson Elementary School Gifted Education. Ernest Chambers, he's Burnley Moran in physical education. For the secondary group, we have Pam Brown, outstanding special education teacher at Charlottesville High School, and Sam
Alessio.
I'm, I'm sorry, Samantha D. Ellis.
Alessio.
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 Alessio, thank you, Sam, for your forgiveness. And Sam is one of our science teachers at Buford Middle School. Thank you, Sam, for participating. And then we'll have the facilities group, and that was co-chaired by Caitlin Natalie, and, I'm sorry, Caitlin Natali, who is one of our second grade teachers at Clark Elementary School, and one of our parents, John Wells, who is from Burnley Moran. So we look forward to hearing from all of our work groups, and we'll start with our elementary work group.
Hi, Ms. Esposito, thank you for joining us today.
And good evening, everyone.
Sorry, Mr. Chambers, welcome.
That's all right. I know y'all are gonna give me the, you know, just, okay. So, hello, School Board. Hello, Central Office, Dr. Atkins, parents, CCS staff, and to the best students in the country. Our students here at Charlottesville City Schools, we are so excited to have this opportunity to deliver this information to you. And this is what we have come up with, as far as the elementary side. Slide. The purpose of the committee, as you can read, to receive the data regarding the current status of COVID-19 in Charlotte City and neighboring communities. Receive and consider the ongoing data and recommendations of CDC, Virginia Department of Health, and TJ. Discuss potential options for instructional model moving forward and provide recommendations to the superintendent regarding the models. Revisit the process until we can fully open the schools. We met on September 16th, the 23rd, and September 30th to review the data and begin this discussion. At the September 30th meeting, three subcommittees were put together and tasked with going to data and preparing recommendations for the superintendent. And here we are, brought those recommendations to Dr. Atkins earlier this week, and here we are. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dr. Kraft. Next slide, please. Or am I reading, am I reading from my own? There we go, we believe. And I'll just hit on these, and I guess you guys will have questions even after we get done on public comment. We believe that a four-day model is optimal. We are concerned about the divisions. I need to move my stuff because I can't read, there we go. We're concerned about the division's ability to staff this month. A two-day hybrid model would reduce the face-to-face contact with classroom teachers, but we recommend this over remaining virtual for the rest of the year. So we really want to have a face-to-face opportunity with our kids, but depending on how things go, it may not work out. So we're hoping that somehow we can either work out the four-day model or a hybrid. How we can determine if we do go hybrid, that we can talk to the health professional to make sure how a hybrid will work. And then this model is vital to ensure students from the same family are in the same cohort. This recommendation is not a one, is a one-size-fits-all model, and individual programs will function just like SPED and ELL. And we may need to return different school timeline with that, but consider that separately. Next slide, please. No matter which in-person learning model is selected, we must have equity between in-person and virtual learning. How will virtual students be able, we need to know how will virtual students be able to access whatever in-person learning looks like, meaning specials, STEM, gifted, and intervention. What do their class sizes look like relative to a normal school, normal day, or normal class size? And we need to know, we like to see that students are kept with their homeschool as much as possible, and if not, that they are co-horted with other schools. Next slide, please. Not, I'm sorry, not co-horted with other schools, but they are co-hored together at another school. But those same kids will stay together like Johnson kids, will stay with Johnson kids, and Jackson Bar kids, that's about if we have to send them to different schools. Next slide, please. And here's what we are considering as our phases, or recommending for our phases, that we bring back the first cohort January 11th, and that is pre-K first and fifth, and then the second cohort seven, eight days after that with second, fourth, and sixth. So we have everybody in hopefully by January 19th. We believe that us younger students would benefit from the, from the early return and in-person instruction. And fifth graders, since they are new to Walker, would, would benefit from learning the building, learning how to move around in the building, and building community. Next slide, please. We would suggest, or could ask, that if we could, at that time of January the 4th through the 8th, would remain virtual in order to give for holiday travel, and we would do this pretty much like we do on Fridays right now with a morning meeting and asynchronous learning during that time to give teachers an opportunity to work on their classrooms, to get them set up for, for kids returning into the classroom the following week. Must be for faculty and staff training, because we're gonna need to learn how do we navigate with kids in our classroom, and how do we navigate in hallways when we have students and more staff in the building. And schools will need to get ready. And a big thing at the bottom here about when would the Y close at Walker? Next slide, please. Additional considerations, how do we reduce exposure, special, specialist teachers, because we will need to know what are we gonna do as far as special teachers? Are we gonna teach in the classroom? Are we going to classrooms? Are we gonna teach virtually? Are we gonna be asked to come into the building to teach? So we will need to know how do we do that, because we have to see, or we see every child. The school division should do a big PR push to let, to encourage parents to give blue shots. So, so important that we need to get those things done if possible to start off on the right foot and keep schools open. We want to keep schools open as much as possible. So getting those little things down would be a big help. Looking to tents, if we can put tents on campuses. Consider the possibility to move students voluntarily to another school. That's kind of what we talked about, about keeping the groups together if one school has more kids coming back than another and having to pivot a little bit. And a plan should be in place to pivot, if possible, going back to virtual. We will need to know what we would need to do if things change and what, why, and how we would go back to virtual when those things change. And when in doubt, Earl on the side of transparency, talk, talk, talk. Next slide, please. What we need, reopen requirements. Teachers must be given a duty-free lunch at the appropriate midday time. We have pre-Ks going to be off-site at all-site locations. Those thing, cleaning standards need to be at all-site locations as well as what we're gonna do here at the school. A school board plan for teachers and admins to plan on how to get these spaces ready and inventory anything needed. We still need to know what the plan is or how to use sick days or quarantine, how that's gonna be handled. We need a protocol when students need to, when schools need to close, that must be fleshed out. We need to, do we need to close a school? A classroom, how do we need to work that out? And a checklist to confirm that all schools have everything they need to reopen. Survey requirements. We're asking that we, that a survey is sent out hopefully no later than the November 16th, and if we need staff follow-up, we can get that staff follow-up. So we're gonna be asking our teachers, if possible, to reach out to parents to help with making sure we get every voice heard, or as many voices heard from our community to know what we're, what they need to know about reopening. A survey start is a list of expectations and policies and procedures of how the day is gonna look. That's the probably gonna be the biggest thing that parents will wanna know and kids will wanna know is what will school look like when we return using this in January 11th. Using our four-day model. Next slide, please. Other survey requirements, parents will need to know that no matter what model we implement, it is possible that your child's teacher may change. That the hybrid model means two days of teacher-led instruction rather than four. If we implement a hybrid model, it is only because we cannot staff a four-day model. That their child will be in the same classroom all day long, probably except for recess. The ability to offer intervention and enrichment for kids may change greatly because of staffing needs to make sure we have kids spread out as much as we can within the school. Parents need to know that specials is gonna look different, is not gonna be, you know, music and PE and art and library are not gonna look the same as it was when we left here on March 13th. We need to know, we don't know if class is gonna be an option because of the way we're gonna be spread out amongst all the school campus and all this, and in the school building, class may not be an option. And the day may look a lot different. And we need to let our kids know that, that, that the day is gonna look a lot different than it was when we left school. Class size may, classmates, how much would they be on the computer and how much movement? We just don't know. It depends. There are gonna be restrictions there. And I think we have to go back to the top where it says it probably will be in the classroom all day long except for, we said. Which slide was that? I think I'm passing this over to Esposito. High five. Did Esposito leave me?
We are, I'm not able to hear you, Ms. Esposito, so I'll let you know when we can hear your voice.
She left me.
Yeah, it says you're unmuted, but for some reason, the speakers are not there. Do you happen to have a pair of headphones nearby or something you can plug into real fast?
I can continue if need be. We're almost done.
I think technology has taught us an added layer of patience, right? We have to be, be expecting these delays, and we all just roll with it.
Yes, sir.
Just as, just as kindly as we do for our students.
Okay, does, can you hear me now?
You are live, yes.
Okay, great. So, we are gonna say the, the secondary committee is gonna have recommendations for the metrics. We agree with those. And we fully endorse them. We had a couple of additions. We wanted to have a plan for what triggers a school or division closure. If we're read in the CDC metric recommendations for a certain number of days, we think the school division should consult with the Thomas Jefferson Health District to determine what the trigger is to see whether or not schools need to close. And one of the ways that we felt dealing with the quarantine piece was that in the event of an exposure, we thought the entire class should flip to virtual for two weeks, as we believed that doing virtual instruction for two weeks was preferable to trying to find subs for two weeks within a building. And that was pretty much our whole presentation. We left a couple of slides in that we're not gonna go over, but they really get down to the heart of all of the things that we took into consideration when we were making these recommendations that we know virtual teaching is not working for everybody, that this is really hard on working families. And just to kind of give you a summary of all the things that we were, that we considered, so that, that is it.
Okay, so I guess we'll move on to the secondary presentation, if that's amenable.
Yep. Good evening, School Board members, Central Office staff, CCS staff, and Charlottesville community members. Welcome to my virtual classroom. And we, our group was made up of parents, teachers, school staff, and administrators, and we worked really hard to come up with these recommendations. Next slide, please. The face-to-face learning option that we were given is the hybrid model. This model was the only option that we have due to the classroom and scheduling constraints that we have. We started with what concerns do and would we have as parents faced with this option? The primary concern that was voiced was that the shift to hybrid would change the live instruction times, either in building or virtually, to one day per week, per class. Presently, secondary students are in each class two days per week and working asynchronously for two days. Another concern was that virtual-only students would see an increase in screen time as they would log in simultaneously with their face-to-face peers in class. Another was that families who choose virtual-only learning should be required to remain virtual for the remainder of the school year. Each course has been split into two different groups, a Group A and a Group B. And these splits were driven by the numbers and by scheduling, and someone choosing to try to, or attempting to transfer back and forth could cause a problem with the numbers all around. And one thing that was extremely important to all of us on our committee was that a student who could not or chose not to refuse, who cannot or refuse to wear a mask, must remain virtual. Next slide, please. This is a sample schedule for Buford and CHS. Lugo McGinnis and the Leap Beyond program would have unique schedules for their programs, but both Buford and CHS would utilize the block scheduling that we've been using this year so far. Due to the need to split the classes in half, you can see that each group, A, odd and even blocks, A, odd and even block classes and B, odd and even block classes would meet face-to-face once a week for live instruction. The other days would be asynchronous for each class. And you can also notice on Friday that is still reserved for teacher meetings, professional learning and building sanitation. Next slide, please. Cohort three would consist of Buford, CHS and the post-grad program and LMA. As stated before, the courses have been split into A and B groups. So that's why it made more sense for secondary to start at Buford and not any sooner than that. We would like to recommend that when possible, students from one family across the school division be placed in the same A or B groups. This is for scheduling purposes. We would like for that to happen. But it's, we understand that there's, that's not always going to be the case. When that's not possible, we ask that group three, the cohort group three scheduling supersede cohorts one and two. Cohort three classes are less flexible for changes than the other cohorts due to teachers holding in specific endorsements and not being able to teach other courses. And also another thing that we were looking at is Charlottesville High School and Buford both have semester-long courses. So that kind of makes it different when we're splitting up and people have to move on to other courses. The A and B groups cannot be altered by request. This is due to the scheduling of classes and the number of students in each section. Classes have to be split in half. And you can only have so many people in the classroom safely with the accommodations that the CDC has given us. Next slide, please. Our phase recommendation is for cohort three to start the hybrid schedule on February 1st, which is the beginning of the third quarter. There are courses at Buford and CHS that are semester courses, and this is the logical break in the classes. Starting school earlier creates additional transitions for students and staff. We would like to suggest that there be back-to-school events for seventh grade, ninth grade and students who are new to the division who are opting for face-to-face instruction. This will decrease the stress and anxiety of entering a new school for the first time on the first day of school. I don't know how many of you have been in Charlottesville High School, but it is not an easy place to find your way around if you've never been there before. It's so easy to get turned around and I've been there for over 20 years and there's still things I'm finding. These would be held on January 8th for group A, January 15th for group B, and January 22nd would be the makeup snow day for anyone who could not be at either one of the first two dates. And we recommend that bus transportation be offered to assist in getting as many students involved as possible because we really feel that being in the building prior to the start of school is extremely important. Next slide, please. At this time, Sam DeLassio will take over.
Sorry about that. I seem to do that in my classes all the time, too. So I am going to be talking about CDC and Virginia Department of Health safety metrics that have been recommended and that we would like to see implemented with Charlottesville City Schools prior to opening. Some of the teachers that teach within classrooms that are completely enclosed feel very strongly about independent air quality testing and have pushed to have all the buildings and classrooms scanned for air quality. We feel very important that it, teachers and staff need sanitation training before entering the buildings. We also need to have some specific safety guidelines for close encounters with students due to medical reasons or especially in the secondary schools, you know, fights do happen, things like that. How do principals and counselors, how do they handle those types of situations in this COVID time? Just to reiterate that students who opt for virtual learning cannot change back to face-to-face unless there's space available. And this has to do with the scheduling that is pretty tricky at the secondary level. And absolutely no exceptions to the mask rule. No mask means a virtual option. Next slide, please. We recommend implementing all five mitigation strategies recommended by the CDC for opening schools. We also suggest monitoring the percent positivity rate and cases per 1,000 for a persistent or rapid rise. We recognize that the cases per 100,000 can be skewed because of UVA in our community, but if that number starts to spike or make a significant change upwards, that should be a warning sign that we need to think about our school safety. Using a health monitoring app for students and staff daily, this would help get people checked into the buildings quickly if somebody is monitoring symptoms before and temperatures before they arrive on school grounds. Having the Charlottesville City Schools create a COVID dashboard similar to what Abmar County has done as well as a lot of other school districts around Virginia. Making sure that the Thomas Jefferson soon-to-be Blue Ridge Health District can maintain the 90% contact tracing capacity. And then following the Thomas Jefferson Blue Ridge Health District recommendations for school closings during an outbreak. So we would rely on their expertise as to whether we needed to close school or division-wide. Next, please. These are our first steps to kind of get things off the ground. Offering a Blue Ridge Health District presentation on metrics and data to all Charlottesville City School staff and teachers. Sorry, my slide disappeared, but I have a backup. Oh, there we go. Survey teachers to determine face-to-face versus hybrid availability. Making sure time is allocated for teachers planning to adjust to hybrid during contract hours. Send a detailed parent survey to include proposed schedule changes and mitigation rules. Explore the use of Currie School students as in-person aides for teachers teaching virtually. And investigate the use of internet hubs throughout the city to continue to make virtual learning more equitable. We still know that there are kind of pockets where students are having trouble connecting reliably for virtual learning. And that is it. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
All right, I'm going to get started on with the facilities and mitigation presentation. Next slide, please. We were tasked with something a little bit different. We were asked to take a look at what Charlottesville City Schools already had in place as their proposed mitigation strategies and give some feedback. With that, they also asked us to look a little bit more into the wastewater testing that had been brought to our attention. And then for any additional recommendation mitigation strategies we might have. So we really dove deep into those three areas. Next slide, please. So I'm, we're going to start by talking about the proposed facility mitigation strategies that are taking place in the facilities. Next slide. So Charlottesville City Schools has already begun and is currently working on maintaining a supply of PPE. Making sure that those are available to schools. Some of the PPE includes the masks, face shields, hand sanitizer gloves, temperature scanning equipment, signage and disinfection equipment and supplies. Next slide. So we really took a deep look at all of those documents and here were our concerns or feedback that we really wanted the district to look a little bit closer at. So our concern was about over the continued availability of N95s and who would receive those items. We knew that the nurses had been fitted, but not all nurses have received them due to availability. We also wanted to expand who those would be available to. Sped teachers who are in close contact with students, custodians and definitely nurses. There was concern over gown availability. The nursing staff has been meeting and they estimated possibly using around 130 gowns a day, depending on gowns being worn in and outside of different rooms, having to change those. And so at the time, the supply list was around 500 gowns. So we were concerned about the number of gowns that the school system had purchased already. And then we wanted to get a better idea of what supplies were already in buildings and then what supplies are available and possibly streamline that process. Right now you have to go through the principals and they're sort of a middleman. So we, we wanted to see if we could create a system where a staff member could apply or ask for certain supplies that they need. Next slide. This was a big conversation about ensuring that students and staff have access to new and clean masks. Right now it was a provide-your-own mask sort of situation, knowing that masks would be available on a prime request. But we really wanted to make sure and especially our students who are coming in the same mask each day that we could have some system to ensure that they're, they're wearing clean and effective masks each day. And, and do we have the supply to ensure that we could give a student a mask every single time or a staff member? There was some concern over the face shields and how long those would last, being very clear that the face shields are in addition to masks. But some teachers felt like that was definitely a requirement that they needed. And then we wanted to look into an increase in supply of plexiglass dividers. Right now it would be teachers would have to share on some of those dividers and we really wanted to make sure, especially those teachers who are using their dividers consistently, that they weren't also having to share dividers with another teacher. And hoping that we could purchase some more of those. Next slide. All right, I'm going to turn it over to John and then I'll close us up over at the end.
Okay, thanks, Caitlin. So we, we discussed procedures and protocols in Charlottesville City Schools is currently developing standard division-wide protocols for schools to follow. And additional protocols will be tailored in some cases by building and grade level. Those, those include space and assigned seating, daily custodial plans, additional disinfection protocol, health screening, contact tracing and clear protocol for, for non-compliant behaviors. The, the protocols need to be made available to staff, the public and families prior to the opening of schools. This may affect the family's decisions about whether or not to return. And we need to document for families to sign and agree to the, the protocols. I think this was just one aspect of our, our overall work groups focuses. Communication from the division needs to be, it needs to be clear to all parties, staff, teachers, families and, and people need to be understand what they're going to agree or agreeing to ahead of time. We also add some specific health screening documents for families and students to sign. Establish clear indicators for when school should return to a virtual setting. We were also tasked with discussing and looking at the possible use of wastewater testing. We agreed that all documents should be translated into multiple languages. And we wanted to add a UV, UVA team member to the committee that will work through some of these needed procedures and protocols and what may have worked and not worked at UVA. Next slide, please. Great. The, some different protocols to consider creating included non-compliant behaviors, guidelines for physical interventions, physical space guidelines, attendance policies for staff and students, protocol for closing a classroom, qualifications for potential exposure and required quarantine protocols for students with IEPs and five of fours that meet the guidelines. We also looked at guidelines on family expectations for picking up students from school, guidelines for behaviors outside of school in order to keep schools open. Requirements for when to not, when to or not to send students to school, CDC Department of Health and Department of Health visitor and vendor protocol, an individual classroom bathroom protocol. And the, the sort of the second focus of our group was, was on air handling. We had heard prior to breaking up into the three work groups that the exchange of air and, and the air, the HVAC system generally was a major concern of staff and teachers, which, which makes sense. And so we looked at filtration, ventilation and sanitization and disinfection. And what is in the process of happening is an upgrade to a higher level of MRF filter. That is, I don't believe that's fully complete, but Kim Powell, who was great through this process has a list of where we are on the installs for that. Also in terms of, in terms of the ventilation, the increased outdoor air. How much air is pulled into the system has been essentially maxed out to, to what the system can handle. And there is, I think at this point it would, I think the bid is out. There's a request for a bid for UVC light systems which would, excuse me, would, would destroy COVID within the, the, you know, within the ventilation system. The divisions looked into bipolar ionization and portable HEPA filtration. The idea of bringing portable mitigation devices in when, when necessary. Next slide, please. So the air handling feedback from us was, was that a more detailed list of what projects have and have not been completed at each school is necessary to make everyone feel comfortable. And it sounds as though the division is on top of that. Some form of school report card included, including the estimated project completion dates would be beneficial to all of the stakeholders in this, and we thought was important. We had expressed concern about the timeline of the MRF filter updates. And when these, when they, we deemed to complete, that, like I mentioned, that, that process is, is being taken care of, it seems. We would not recommend opening a building if the project, the filter upgrade was, was incomplete. And then continue the project with the UVC light. I think the early feedback on that is, is that that project could be completed by the timeline that the other two work groups have, have forward. Thank you. And further, further air handling feedback. You know, we did want to look and hear about the cost benefit of some of these measures. And look at tests to make sure all areas of the building meet standards of occupancy with, with air filter, air filtration, and I'll come back to that below with the CO2 monitoring. But the availability of portable HEPA filter machines for rooms that need extra filtering. That was discussed and that is also out for bid and, you know, the division can confirm the inventory for that. We also suggested a visible inspection sticker, you know, something similar to the inspection sticker for a fire extinguisher in a building where things are, you know, things are checked off on a routine basis. So teachers and staff and families know what's, what's available and what's, what's basically up to date. Place those on HVAC filter, potentially place those on HVAC filters so that staff know when their, when their filter was last changed and maintained. And we did talk about the CO2 monitors. It seems as though it's an accepted standard to check, check air, CO, air in each room for CO2 level. And if that confirms or, or does not confirm the, the amount of exchange of, of for CO2 level and if that confirms or does not confirm the amount of exchange of air. And, I don't believe that there are clear numbers on those devices yesterday, but it was our suggestion that teachers and staff be able to, you know, be able to request, request that sort of monitoring, you know, when they, when they want, but also make, you know, have a standard for getting that done in each room as well and develop some sort of checkoff list so everyone is clear on which rooms have been tested and which haven't and when they were tested. And then, protocol for staff, yeah, as I discussed, a protocol for the staff to request that monitoring. Thank you. And, the third thing we were asked to discuss was wastewater testing. It came to our attention that wastewater testing, especially at dorms in UVA, had been effective in heading off outbreaks within the dorms. So, we suggested that more research and conversations need to occur around information collected through wastewater testing and its benefit to the school system. It sounded as though building testing could potentially identify positive students or clusters of students. Wider testing in the city could identify neighborhoods that are seeing increases in cases and this information might be able to be used to target and increase suggested community testing and the availability of that test. So, the recommendation was to continue partnerships with UVA, the city, and the Thomas Jefferson Blue Ridge Health Department to see where this, you know, where the water testing could lead. We wanted to possibly use this data to help us determine if and when schools should return to virtual learning. And, it sounded as though it was a potential viable tool for long-term planning. I think with that, I'll pass it back over to Caitlin.
Thanks, John. And then, the last area that we were asked to take a look at were any additional recommended mitigation measures that we would like the district to consider. So, this sort of became our catch-all category. Next slide. So, there are a couple of things. One thing we really wanted to make sure that the division was clear about was the essential people in the buildings, who are we letting in and making sure that we're keeping it that tight-knit essential group of people, being very clear about protocols for that. This was also taken into consideration as we, as the other teams talked about coming back in January, just making sure that after some of those long breaks, doing maybe a two-week virtual learning after longer breaks, just to ensure that there was a little bit of a quarantine with traveling and everything going on. We also wanted to make sure we had a plan for nurses' substitutes. They are a vital role in our schools, especially coming back now. And so, we want to make sure that we had a backup plan for when a nurse was out. These are two things that the division was already focusing on, so we included them on here, is using amplification systems for teachers who are teaching with masks on. And then, moving towards individual student desks versus trying to get six feet on a table. So, we felt like using individual student desks and only having one student at that desk was preferable. And then, this was our big thing, we put it in bold, that this transition is, it's a lot. And so, we wanted to really make sure that we are giving teachers time to make this transition effectively from virtual to face-to-face learning. Next slide. And so, this is just our summary, some of the most important parts, and I'll go through really quickly. Again, those detailed procedures and protocols before families have to make that decision, we want to make sure everybody is making a decision that is best for their students and the only way to do that is have this information available to everybody. You know, looking at the mitigation supplies and making sure that when we are having people back into our buildings, that we have all of the essentials and we have enough of the essentials to continue the case management, contact tracing, and the communication with the health department. They were on our committee and they have been wonderful, giving us feedback and advice and then really making sure that we are staying on top of when an outbreak occurs in a school that possibly that school needs to move to virtual learning and we just want to make sure that we stay on top of that. And finally, and I'll say it again, just that transition, teachers are having to learn a lot while also doing virtual learning and moving back to the classroom and getting spaces ready and learning so many new protocol that I think many of us never thought we would have to learn. And we want to do it right and we want to do it as safely as possible. And so, making sure that we are giving teachers time to do that and feel good about bringing our kiddos back into our buildings, I think is going to go a long way. So, thank you. That is, that's it from our committee.
I want to thank all three of the work group co-chairs, Christine, Ernest, Pam, Sam, and Caitlin and John. Thank you for your presentation. Before we go to next steps, Ms. McKeeva, we'd like to now answer any questions or get any comments from the board.
Okay, great. Why don't we take, yes, thank you. I want to also personally thank the committee chairs, co-chairs, and then also the members. I just feel like everybody was doing a lot of work in that really short period of time trying to make, get all of this straight and I feel like the recommendations are really strong and I'm grateful for everybody's input. So, thank you for, to everybody who has volunteered their time to be part of this committee. Okay, so who amongst the school board members would like to go first? Great. I'll just call on somebody. Yeah, no, but literally none of the board members except for Lisa. So, I'm gonna go with Ms. Bryson-Moore.
Um, I was just wondering, we were talking about the preschools having the same procedures as the offsite preschools having the same procedure as the Charlottesville City Schools. And I was just wondering, the, what procedures are in place, not just for the preschools right now, because I know there's some students who are back, but just to give us an idea of, can we know how many kids are in the building now and what categories they fall into and, you know, what are the procedures and protocols that are in place right now for them? And, yeah, that was my biggest question is, you know, just learning from them, but also just getting a better idea of who's in the building and how many students and teachers are moving throughout the building.
Ms. Bryson-Moore. Kim Powell is going to give a mitigation update and she will try to address some of those questions that you have during her presentation, if that's alright.
Did you have any other questions, Ms. Bryson-Moore?
That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
I, you know, I'm gonna ask a question. I understand the secondary committees, why they chose February 1st as the timeline. I just wondered to, given some of the numbers from the, from the health department around a positivity rate, I wonder if the elementary school committee has any basis for their, you know, if they can give us, provide any reason for their date that they gave us in terms of the timeline?
I think I can answer that and Ernest can jump in. Although, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I think that some of the concern was really about the protocols being in place and the buildings being ready as opposed to the positivity rates.
Do you think that there's any, do you think that the elementary committee in particular, given some of the mitigation strategies we've talked about, would be amenable or open to an earlier maybe pilot or some sort of, you know, transition-type model before the timeline that they began or that they suggested?
I think that's gonna come down to principals feeling like they can have buildings ready and that all of the, like the facilities group put together such a great list of protocols that need to be in place. I think that all of those things need to be done before we can move people back into the building. If principals felt like they, we could do this more quickly, then I think we'd be on board with that, but our feedback seemed to be that it would be really difficult to have everything done prior to break, especially considering that you have some, like the Y, for instance, at Walker, that does, that, that kind of impacts the timeline.
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you so much for that. Okay, who else has a question on the board?
I do.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can't see anybody right now.
This is, this is.
I'll go, I'll go after Sherri.
Oh, okay. First of all, wow, I'm just blown away by the thoroughness of the work of all of these subcommittees and I thank you for that and I feel like, you know, our community can feel confident that, you know, we will be, that we will have the necessary safety protocols and preparations in place. It's a little bit daunting, but I really appreciate all of your work on this. And a couple of questions. One, just back to the secondary report, and I just wanted to understand a little bit more, it sounds like you said that students will only have one day a week in person? Is that one, they will only be in school in person one day a week or will they be in school two days a week, but one will be one class, set of classes and one will be the other? So, just some clarification?
It's one day a week per class. So, what happens is on Monday, you would have a group, their odd schedule. And on Tuesday, you would have a group possibly their B schedule, meaning they're even versus their odd days. So, they would see their odd block level teachers one day of the week and they would see their even block classes one week. So, and right now, we're seeing them a little, a little bit more than that.
Okay, thank you. I had a question about testing capacity, not the wastewater testing, but the COVID testing. And, do we have a sense of whether COVID testing can be, you know, part of our strategy to really determine the safety of being in our buildings in person? Do we know what that capacity is?
Now, we have Dr. Beth Baptist on our panel tonight. And Beth, can you add any clarity to that or give any clarity to that question?
Currently, in the community, we have testing available, but I don't know that we would have it within our schools. That's something we could talk with the health department about. But, you know, there are different types of tests that can be done, the PCR test versus the antigen test versus other tests. The pediatricians and the health department really don't recommend any but the official PCR test and I don't think we would have the capacity to do widespread testing on that, but that's, I've written that down as a question to ask the health department.
Thank you. And, just one more question right now. We were talking about protocols for closing schools and those were recommended, but do we, have we developed those protocols? Do we know what they are now or do they still need to be developed?
And Dr. Baptist, you want to answer that?
This time yesterday, I would have told you something different than I can tell you today because the CDC has changed their guidelines on what is considered a contact or an exposure. So, I met with folks from the health department today, as did Ms. Powell, and health department's gonna give us some more information about it, but that is something right now that, I mean, we don't have a set protocol to answer your question, but what we will write when we have it will be based on the current CDC guidelines and what Department of Health can recommend. They could not give us full recommendation today.
The one thing that we do know is that that protocol involves consultation with the health department.
Oh, yes.
That is, that is, that's a constant regardless of how the different components and guidance change. That type of decision would always involve a dialogue with the health department as part of the contact tracing process.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you and thank you for all your hard work. Really appreciate it. And that's, that's it for now for me.
Ms. Perry?
One of my questions was answered by Ms. Esposito, so I won't answer it, ask it. Thank you, Ms. Esposito. My other question is, I think it may go to Dr. Atkins, but if not, she will send it to the appropriate person. At the point in time that a decision is made to do face-to-face, I've looked at your tentative outlines, suppose we have more children or families that want to go face-to-face, how will we make that determination? Because, we all know with social distancing, we can't have all 4,000 of our children back in our buildings. So, how do we make that distinction? Because we're only gonna be able to have so many children per class or so many children per building. And, I'm looking at that from both the elementary level and the secondary level. And, as it relates to secondary level, the individual courses, we have more children that may want to be in chemistry face-to-face than we had anticipated. How do we address those issues or is this something that we're working through before we go face-to-face?
That's a great question. The elementary school work group actually put in their recommendations a possible response to your question. Although, they're recommending the four days per week, however, once we send out the intent forms, if we have more families to elect face-to-face than our principals have indicated they can accommodate in each of our buildings, then we need to consider moving to the hybrid model, which would decrease the number of students who are in the building per day and give us more. That's not the preferred model, we would prefer the face-to-face, but there is a recommendation that we move to hybrid should that happen. Tonight, you will hear from two of our principals, Vennel and Johnson, who will give you facility capacity utilization for each of their buildings and what that might look like with various percentages of families electing to do the face-to-face model. And they've done a 65, a 75, and an 85% scenario to show you how much of their facility and staff they would be using with those models.
Thank you. And thank you to the committee for responding to exactly what this will mean academically. Yes, it is going to affect all of the instructors, but I know how much the instructors and the parents, thank you, Mr. Wells, because I understand you were a parent, for understanding the importance of giving quality instruction as best we are able during these pandemic times. And, I hope that if we make a decision to do wastewater testing, that we partner with the city or UVA because it is expensive and when that testing is done, it deals with anybody that's in that building. So, it could be a student, it could be a staff member, it could be anybody in that building where they found traces of positivity. So, it would not just be limited to the students, but it is, as you know, an expensive venture. So, if we could partner with the city and/or UVA or come up with some type of reciprocal agreement, that would be preferable. Thank you.
Ms. Perry, I just want to clarify that the schools will not be doing any wastewater testing. It would definitely be in partnership with the city or UVA or both of them. In fact, it's a very significant undertaking. And frankly, I don't want to put words in the committee's mouth, like I was on that mitigation committee, but it became very clear that schools may not be the best place to test wastewater. But it became very clear that, um, schools may not be the best place to test wastewater. That neighborhoods really are. And it really is in conjunction with a community testing program as to get to where to send, uh, community testing. Right now, you know, there's very, they have various locations. And, um, the wastewater would be have to be in conjunction with like, okay, what neighborhood should we send, um, additional testing resources to? So I just wanted to, uh, clarify that the schools absolutely do not have the resources or bandwidth. That's not our purview at all. We have good relationships with the city who would, um, we're trying to get a more community wide focus around wastewater testing. Okay, so Mr. Wade, do you have any questions?
Yeah, um, yes. Um, again, I apologize for coming in late. Um, I think it was really good to hear from the committee members. I thought that was really impactful. Um, and I have a question perhaps for, um, I came in when, um, Mr. C was, I'm giving this presentation. But anyone could could speak on this, that as the groups were deliberating, was there one or two pieces of information that you felt that you really could have used other than a vaccine? That you didn't have that you said, man, if we had this, this really could have increased our knowledge and our ability to make decisions and recommendations?
So, uh, maybe we start with the elementary, Ms. Um, Esposito or Mr. Chambers, want to answer that?
I think for me, the biggest thing was knowing, um, the positivity rate in the city of just around because it kept, you know, with the way TJ, was keeping the the records and things like that, it was just really difficult to understand where we were. Because they, it was UV involved in it or was it not? And and that type of thing. So it was really difficult to kind of know that the percentages to know, you know, when we would say, what would be the metric number, um, of when we would need to go back virtual? So that's that was just kind of hard to to get that, to understand that.
Ms. Esposito, did you want to chime in?
Um, I no, I think Ernest covered most of it. I think one thing that we got sort of late in the process that was helpful was when the CDC actually made recommendations that we could look at and say like, like our positivity rate was very low, but the case incidence per 100,000, which represents community burden was really high, like one was green and one was red. So I think the CDC coming in with recommendations was super helpful. I think the guidance they released today that changes what a close contact is also really changes the game. And I think that's something that needs to be taken into account as we talk about reopening schools.
Thank you, Ms. Esposito. Ms. Brown, did you want to add anything?
Um, I think for us, um, what did help us was the fact that we did have a doctor on our committee. And she was able to break things down for us so that we could understand. So I think if you didn't have someone who could interpret the numbers and interpret what everything meant, that made it that much harder. So I think for us having a doctor with us who is also working with the CDC and the Health Department made things clearer. I kind of, it kind of opened our eyes to some things that we just weren't comfortable with at first. And they were like, oh, okay, we get it now. Um, so that that was one thing that helped a lot. And that was one of the things that we felt needed to happen for everybody in the system to hear the same things that we did and to understand it because it gave us, I guess, clarity. A little, well, as much clarity as we could have at the time, um, about what was going on.
Great. Mr. Lessie, did you want to chime in on anything?
Really just a second and third, everything that's been said. I I think the clarity piece. I know I've been pushing for, um, staff and teachers to get a presentation from the, uh, Health Department. I know there was some folks who thought that they wouldn't be interested. But I think it does provide, um, a way to understand the numbers. And you can look at the risk a little differently. And honestly, for myself, feel more comfortable with it.
Thank you. Um, Caitlin?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think for facilities is hard because all of our facilities are so different. And so what works in one building doesn't work in another building or what one building has access to, another building doesn't have. So we thought that report card where we could just say, okay, here's what this building has. Here's how this building's doing. Here's what we need for this building. Um, really breaking it down so each teacher could see the building that they are working in. Each family could see the building that their their student is going to. Um, there are just so many different factors and what ifs with the mitigation that we can't possibly have an answer for everything, but making sure that we have an answer for almost everything. And that we're really saying that we are thinking through all of these possible scenarios. And we have a response. I think teachers are also saying to have that as almost like a playbook. Like, okay, this just happened. How do I react? This just happened. What do I do? Because a lot of us don't know what to do or how to handle those situations. So I think for the mitigations, there's just so many factors. And how do we provide everybody with enough to feel like, okay, I can do this? Or I can step my foot into the door and feel confident in my ability, um, to respond. So I think for me, those were those those two big, um, pieces.
John?
Yeah, I would, I would echo, I would echo that and also say, you know, if we, if we had a completely clear schedule of logistics and, you know, when all of this stuff is going to be in and installed and that sort of thing, then, you know, we could have been, oh, you know, a lot more definitive with our with our recommendations. But, you know, I I our sense from the committee was Kim and the division are trying their hardest to accomplish that. You know, the the scheduling and the fulfillment essentially of of the of the logistics. And, you know, I think the group also felt that the clearer the communication of, you know, that those logistics fulfillments, the clearer that that is to all of the teachers and staffs and family, the, you know, the better everyone would feel because some of some of the mitigation things, you know, like the, like the UVC system in the in the, uh, in the HVAC units that can handle it. I mean, that's, that's above and beyond, right? The, uh, the CDC and the BDH guidelines. And hopefully makes everyone feel that much, you know, incrementally more more comfortable. Same with the, you know, CO2 monitors and the HEPA HEPA monitors. So just clarification around the the logistics and fulfillment would, you know, in a perfect world, that would have been, that would be really helpful.
Thanks, Hal. John, I mean, uh, Mr. Wade, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm so sorry. Who's next? Anybody? Ms. Torres, did you have a, or Mr. Bryant? Thank you. I see you now.
Well, most of my questions was in regards to mitigation, but since Kim is going to do, give us an update on that. I'll take notes and perhaps have questions about that. But a couple of things, um, first of all, to say to the COVID committee, you all did an outstanding job in in bringing all this information to us and kudos to your great work. I said a couple of minor things I I was writing down as they were speaking. Um, Ms. Esposito in the elementary group, there was a mention about teacher training. Um, is this training in sanitation? Or will all teachers, uh, across, um, the school system be trained? I wasn't quite sure what type of training you were referring to. I think Mr. Chambers was speaking at the time.
Um, I think most of it has to do with, um, part of it is is sanitation. It is, how do you deal with bathroom trips to, you know, for elementary kids who are in and out of bathrooms? When you don't have a classroom bathroom? Who's cleaning? How's how are things getting cleaned? It's, it's a lot of small little things that teachers are going to have to know how to do. And there are going to have to be very clear procedures in place. And I think that is sort of what we're looking at.
And you all suggesting who to do this training? Or recommending? We don't have an idea at this point.
Who whoever we think the experts are.
Okay. My second question, thank you, Ms. Esposito, was the secondary, Ms. Brown. Excuse me, you mentioned in your presentation that, um, refusal to wear a mask, uh, those students must remain virtual. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, um, who is there a protocol in place as to who would determine that? And how many times the kids would have to refuse in order to transition to all virtual setting?
Um, not that I know of as of yet, but that's kind of a little bit above my pay grade. So I would not be making that decision.
I know you wouldn't be making a decision, but I said, who would be, who would be in charge? Or what would be the protocol, I guess, in regards to making a decision? Would it be, I'm sure it's probably administrative along with the teacher.
My my assumption would be that it would be at the administrative level level. And, um, you know, we're just basically concerned with mask wearing, that it be adhered to. That that's very important to us.
So we're going to have a protocol in place prior to, um, in person. Um, and those protocols will be sent home to the parents. Is that correct? Is that what you all are recommending?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. And I think those are the two things that stood out. The rest of them was in regards to mitigation. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Ms. Torres, Ms. Torres and I had the benefit of being on the mitigation subcommittee and on the COVID committee in general. So, um, what questions, if any, or comments do you have, Ms. Torres?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for the presentations, everybody. Um, so I did have just a question. I was curious. And I know that Dr. Bonds has has, um, presented and and we talked a little bit with her in a prior meeting about, you know, the protocol for testing. Um, understanding that we will be consulting closely with the Blue Ridge Health Department. But will the division, um, set any standards or practices if there's an outbreak in class? Are we going to take that on individually or locally? Or is that something that we're going to defer to the Health Department to guide us on?
Kim, would you you respond to that, please?
You're muted.
I bet that. So, um, you were asking about how we're going to do contact. Could you say that again, Lisa? I apologize.
No, 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 no problem. So, I mean, I know that, um, I mean, things are changing, right? Our our protocols are changing, definitions of things are changing. But if there's an outbreak, say, in a classroom, um, and and big picture, we're going to be consulting with the Health Department on how to handle things. But are we at the division level or in each school going to, um, set policies or practices as far as how that will be handled in a classroom situation? And I know it's different in the scenarios.
So what we have so far to point to, we have the, um, like, we've seen the communications that other school divisions have used. And that, um, and that are like, there's even a standard or a template from the Department of Health. And I think I thought we shared this as part of the documents at some point with the advisory committee to give people a feel for if there's a, a case in a school, how, what do those communications look like? Because that's already going on around us. But as far as like, making decisions on what happens with that, a class or a school in relation to cases that truly is done in consultation with the Health Department. And it's all about whether determining through the contact, um, tracing, was the was the spread in the school, right? When you look around us, there are cases occurring in the schools that have been having face to face instruction. But none of the schools, um, in our local area, now, I believe elsewhere in the Commonwealth, some schools have closed for a period of time. And again, the Health Department advises on how long to stay closed and all of that. But it's all about whether the spread is in is occurring in the school or not, or if it's happening outside of the school. And with the new guidance today around what is the definition of exposure, that is really going to change the game for contact tracing and those recommendations. So, um, you know, we could, we, the fact is, I think we could declare some metric today as a, as a, as a board, you could. But it could change, you know, in a, in a week or a month if if the guidance changes. So we we really are going to be heavily dependent, I believe, on the Health Department. And I have, I am not aware, but this does not mean it doesn't exist. But, um, the school divisions I'm aware of that are doing face to face, they haven't made a hard and fast declaration of at this level, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. And at this level, we're gonna do this. It's more, um, you know, do working in collaboration with the Health Department. But it's all about whether your mitigation measures are working and whether there's any evidence that the spread is occurring in your facility. At up to this point, that's the way school divisions are operating.
Gotcha. Thank you. It's, it's, this is just so challenging, right? On so many different levels and there's so many unknowns and scenarios could be so different. And I just, you know, anticipate and hope that when we return face to face that we aren't having to make these decisions. But, um, it's just going to be hard because people are, you know, I mean, I think it's going to take us all by surprise and as prepared as we potentially can be, you know, to to have to close down a classroom or to close down a school. I mean, if it really got out of hand, um, it's just going to be really hard. Anyway. Um, and and have another question, but I anticipate that maybe it might be answered with the presentation on, um, capacity and utilization limits that's coming up. So I'll hold off on that one. But I did just want to check in because, um, I know I heard it in a presentation and I heard it again tonight. And I just thought it was worthy of mentioning, um, I mean, how much talk or do we really anticipate? Or do we know what are the odds of having to reshuffle or relocate cohorts? And I know this depends on how many students come back, um, you know, or want to come face to face. But, I mean, do we think that's that's likely?
Ms. Torres, um, when, uh, Dr. Kirchner and Ms. Thompson present, they are going to touch on that. And and in all likelihood, some cohorts will have to be rerostered. Uh, and they they have that in their presentation and can lend more explanation to that when they present.
Okay, thank you.
Um, did I miss a board member? Does anybody else?
So I'm sorry, Jen, if I just had one quick follow up, I may have missed it. But, um, um, Beth and Kim, the new guidelines that you mentioned from CDC, it would, do you anticipate there'd be more stringent as far as contract tracing or or not? Uh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Contact tracing probably is going to be more stringent because it it before an exposure was less than six feet without a mask up to 15 minutes at a time. Now that has changed to 15 minutes cumulati- cumulatively over 24 hours. So if I spent five minutes with you three different times during the day, that might be an exposure if the mitigation factors were not in place. So that could be more with contact tracing. With the meeting we had with the Health Department today, uh, even the physicians and Health Department folks said it probably won't change much of what we're doing as schools as long as all of our mitigation factors are in place. But it could very well likely change some of the contact tracing responsibilities that the Health Department will do. And it could, it could make us look, um, more rigidly at quarantine. But it won't change any of the rules about quarantining or isolation. So right now they're trying to really figure out what does this new guidance mean? And they're going to, they being the Health Department, will get information out to the community as quickly as as they can. So we hope to have more guidance locally by tomorrow or Monday.
And if I may add, the other thing it did is it reinforces the importance of cohorting.
Yes.
Because that is, that's another, just that's the other big implication for for today. It doesn't so much change the recommended mitigation measures or anything with that. But it will have implications for, uh, contact tracing. And it definitely reinforces the importance of cohorts and or pods, whatever.
Yeah. And as it was mentioned by one of the groups, you know, the questions even about bathrooms, recommending the cohorting of the same group of people who would be in bathrooms at the same time or halls at the same time. So really, you'd be with one group as much as possible. So we're going to look at all of that. And when we get the the other guidance, we'll, we'll make sure it gets, um, pulled into everything else we're doing.
Madam Chair, real quick, I'm sorry. I again, I just, you know, we are doing such an incredible job preparing for everybody to return to the buildings. And I just, I I just feel like, um, we are going to, we are going above and beyond for in building mitigations. But again, a reminder to everybody that this was a community effort. So those kids go home, you know, those kids are in contact with whoever. So, I mean, we want the kids back in the buildings. We want the teachers back in the buildings. But it is a community effort and every decision we. But it is a community effort, and every decision we make can impact and, and blow this all to smithereens. So everybody, we have to do our parts. Thank you.
Um, so I, my, I'm not going to make any comments. Uh, I mean, I don't have any questions for the committee or anybody, really. I just have a comment, uh, which may be addressed later on in the presentation. But my, um, I really do think I, you know, the more I think about the school-based uh, report cards, um, and then like a playbook or, um, you know, guidelines um, for the protocols that we have in place. I did, or that, you know, I just feel like having everything in writing and being able to present it and, you know, to our teachers and to our staff and to even to some of our families, um, I think will be very helpful. Um, and so I just want to, like, there's a, there's a lot, and um, you know, a lot of it's already been written down. But I think, um, you know, we need to be as transparent as possible that we um, do that kind of report card, but also identify the protocols in place for the teachers, um, so that they can know what to do in the event of um, many scenarios that might play out during the course of a day. So yeah, I, I, I really appreciate that. I just wanted to echo the committee's recommendation about those items specifically. Um, and if there's no other comments for the questions for the committee from the board, kind of hoping we can move on to the mitigation status by, um, Kim.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Atkins, members of the board. Um, I'll wait, pause a moment here for the presentation to be displayed.
Sorry, it's taken a minute.
It's okay. So uh, when we think about, when I think about mitigation measures, and there's so many things we, we can be doing and that we want to do, to kind of boil that down uh, into manageable categories, uh, we think about, I, I think about it in the categories of supplies, the procedures and protocols, um, air handling, and then kind of that miscellaneous all other, and, and Caitlin touched on this earlier in reporting out um, for the subcommittee's work. Leslie, you can advance two slides forward if you like. So that's just speaks to the categories. Okay, so tonight's focus is just to give you an update on where we are with the implementation or the readiness, if you will, uh, to provide all the different types of mitigation measures across these four categories. And so just to, just here for a moment, I want to make sure everyone understands the, the key, if you will. You've got um, green means the items have been delivered to schools already. And um, or, and/or we have them, you know, stocked in the division. And then yellow means things are in progress and they're almost done, they're going to be completed by the end of this month. Orange are things that we expect to complete in November. Blue indicates things that will be completed in December. And then this purple color represents a few things that we will be, that will linger into the first quarter of, of the new calendar year for completion. When you see the items listed in yellow, yellow um, relates to items that are directly connected with the five CDC indicators for dynamic school decision-making. And the web link is there if you would like to actually check out that webpage if you haven't already. It, you might, you may find it interesting. This has to do with um, what, um, I think, believe Ms. Esposito mentioned that was helpful, that during the work of the COVID Advisory Committee, this, this tool did come forward from the CDC. Okay, next slide, Leslie. So the first area, our supplies. And um, again, you know, yellow uh, connects with the masks, the hand hygiene and the uh, disinfection, additional disinfection and cleaning uh, measures. And as you can see here, as a division, we are uh, in a good position to um, provide all of the supplies that are recommended for, to prop, you know, to properly mitigate um, the spread of COVID-19 in our schools. Next slide, Leslie. So this speaks to where we are with procedures and protocols. And um, so a couple of things here. I, I used a yellow banner for procedures and protocols because when I started to think about the, the, this area, everything is related, everything that we do can be connected to the, the core guidance, those key indicators that the CDC um, has put forth for your readiness as a school division to, to have more students in person. So that's why the headings are yellow, because these are all connected to those core in one way or another. Um, a couple of things, I completely agree. Um, we, it's so important to have everything written down and in a format that's very usable because when you're under stress, uh, and this, this is all a very stressful situation, you need to have that to just grab, so you don't have to think too much about what do I do in this situation? What are my expectations? So that documentation piece is very important. And green checkmarks, in this case, are things that we already have documented and, and um, settled, if you will, from a school perspective, um, unless the guidance changes and we have to revisit something there. But the yellow are, are in draft form, but we maybe haven't shared it as broadly. And then the orange checkmarks are things that we have in progress and will be finishing up in November. So um, at, at this point, one thing I want to mention is that um, the question that came up earlier about sped and like pre-K off-site. First, I want to just say that there are no pre-K programs operating, you know, outside of our schools. We're not operating pre-K period, but no, no off-site pre-K centers are open. There's only one location that we're looking at, um, and that'll come up later in the presentation. But we couldn't, we can't really, at this point, look at multiple priests. Uh, we evaluated or looked at lots of different options, but we can't really spread our pre-K program into more than one off-campus location because we need an administrator for that location, and we, we don't have extra principals. So um, you know, we, we have a coordinator for early childhood education, and so that, that person can serve as an administrator. But that's why there's only one location. And um, that location would follow all the same protocols, will provide additional air filtration and all the supplies. You know, if, if we move, assuming we move forward with increasing, you know, face-to-face learning, and we're addressing our, um, our youngest learners, everything will be in place at that facility, just like at a Charlesville City School. Um, so I'd like to share that. And then with regard to special education, um, I know Katrina Lee is on this call, and they, they are following a protocol when a student is invited to come on campus for um, in-person learning. And if she's available, um, she could speak to that now would probably a good time because that is a, a process or protocol.
Sure. Thank you, Kim. So yes, we are working with IP teams, and when students, um, IP teams determine that the students need to come in for services, um, the students are, um, and the parents are provided with letters. And we have protocols, um, mitigation factors that we've developed. And so we provide um, the PPE um, prior to, and the students are checked. Um, we do the etestation forms, um, the parents are given forms, and the teachers are given forms to make sure that the checks are done daily before the students leave home. Um, and our students aren't coming in every day. It's not to replace a full school day, but we are providing services based on the IEPs. So that's how we're providing services right now, and it's going very well. Um, right now, we have 20 um, now students coming in and out for services, not at all at the same time. Um, and so right now, we have occupational therapists, physical therapists, and speech therapists who are providing services in and out um, for our students. Again, not all at the same time, um, but again, it's going quite well. So and, you know, the IP teams, and we're staggering those, um, those meetings at times.
Thank you, Katrina. And um, I've been working with Katrina. We, they actually have, I think it's a basket or a, or a tote that they give each staff person that's being asked to, um, that's, that's working with students face-to-face, and it has all the basic supplies. And then part of the protocols, if they need a gown, they go to the nurse at the, at the school where they're working to, to pull gowns. I think that's the only thing that's not in those, those little uh, baskets or kits, if you will. You can go to the next slide now, Leslie. Thank you. All right, so air handling mitigation measures. So everything that's in green is already in place. And um, Jackson Via and Greenbrier, tho- their filter upgrades are in process for this. These are upgrading the filters that are integrated with the whole building um, heating and cooling system. Um, so Greenbrier and Jackson Via are um, being completed this month. And Clark has nine classrooms, and I know exactly which classrooms those are. And there's a back order on the filters needed to serve those nine classrooms. I don't know if the original order just got shorted or if they were defective or what. But for whatever reason, Clark has done except for those nine rooms. And what we will do, um, if, you know, they're, if they're meeting with students in those rooms, we can certainly provide the portable units there now, next week, when, you know, whenever needed to um, provide additional filtration in that space until um, those filters catch up. Um, the, with regard to ventilation, and again, the early recommendations, and still the standard, if you will, is, you know, you address filtration to the best extent that you can, and you address ventilation to the best extent that you can. And the um, facilities maintenance team has implemented, implemented multiple protocols to increase ventilation, working with our building automation systems. The row with the purple checkmarks, um, that speaks to what John was talking about earlier with this next level of um, air handling mitigation work. And it's really more around disinfection, uh, the UVC lights that can actually kill or deactivate the virus in ductwork. If you have sufficient ductwork to allow the proper contact time to, to address the virus. And then bipolar ionization, there's a lot of that type of equipment that's going in, going in throughout the, um, our schools and facilities. And um, bipolar ionization acts on the COVID virus in a number of different ways to um, make it easier to trap by filters and also to actually kill or deactivate the virus. So um, that work, those, the IFB is out now. I think it closes in about another week. The contract will be awarded, and then the, the, the additional equipment will start to come in. And at this point, the um, idea is that early to mid-December is when contractors will be swarming around the buildings, installing everything as it comes in. Um, the reason that it's marked to go into the first quarter of next year is because our ability to fully implement all those measures is truly dependent on that contract being awarded and then how fast these items come in. And just like every other thing that's related to mitigating COVID-19, you know, demand can be high. And so sometimes deliveries can be delayed. But those measures will start to be implemented um, as soon as the equipment comes in. And so that's really going to be what drives that timeline and that, that, and how quickly it occurs. And also, the city has indicated they will look to us, we can give them like prioritization as far as what parts of buildings are in more or less use or whatever. And they'll work with us so that as the equipment does come in, we'll dispatch it to the areas where it's most needed or whatever first. Um, so we'll manage our, our way through that process, and hopefully it will go as quickly as possible. Um, and then the standalone HEPA filtration units, we started getting those um, just this month. And we have some in reserve to deploy, you know, where needed for situations like, for example, the Clark, um, the nine rooms that just, the filters are backordered. Um, we could deploy units where needed um, to address those needs. And then this was also mentioned um, during John's portion of the subcommittee report out. One of the things that we can reasonably do to, to kind of um, test air quality and give people a sense of knowing what the situation is in their space if they have doubts, is we can uh, deploy like a portable CO2 monitoring unit to each school or building as a, at least as a starting point. So that if a teacher has concerns, thinks their areas, you know, feel stuffy, you know, they could, we, the, someone in the building, the principal or AP can take the meter to the room and take a reading right there and see, well, what are the CO2 levels? Because that is a, a indication, it, you know, when you're reading CO2, it's, okay, what's my level of outdoor air exchange in relation to the occupancy of the room? Um, there's a lot of talk and requests for, you know, independent air quality testing. And, and, you know, whenever there's a concern about a space in, in any of our buildings, pre-COVID, there's a protocol you go through to bring someone in. And usually, you're testing for mold, mildew, mildew and allergens. But that's not the type of thing you're looking for in this case. And there are only so many tools you can reasonably deploy to try to get a handle on what's really relevant in this situation with the COVID virus. And the CO2 monitoring is one of the things that can be reasonably um, made available. Um, next slide, Leslie.
Hey, Kim, can I just interrupt here and just remark? I mean, from, from what our discussion this morning, this afternoon, I wanted to just, I, I mean, I feel like the public would be, it's good for them to know that the city actually um, uh, did a current, you know, got a contractor in to determine the in, indoor air quality. Um, and so they came up with some recommendations. And then that, this, it, this uh, chart, it reflects those recommendations and where they are in that. And one of the things that they wanted to, you know, that, that was mentioned is that basically there's 763 equipment upgrades, which basically means like filters and portable units and all of these, all of these pieces of equipment that I don't know anything about, but now I knew a lot more about. But um, you know, so that's what's being deployed. Um, and the city has been very generous and, and working with you, Kim, and our um, buildings to, to deploy these, um, this equipment so that um, we can have a safe air quali- indoor quality, uh, air quality. So I just, I, I just want to say that this is not something that like you, I mean, even though you're very capable, but like in conjunction with the city and this, you know, this third, this indoor air quality specialist, you know, identified these needs, and that's what's happening here. I just feel like that's really important for the public to kind of understand.
Thank, thank you so much for sharing that because that, that is so true. It is um, you know, a third-party certified professional who was very involved with coming up with what they, what they call the basis for design for all those items that are being implemented on that row that the purple checkmarks represent. It's a great point. Thank you. All right, I think that, that covers air handling for now. Um, so then this last area, the all-other bucket of mitigation measures. Um, we are installing what they're called lockout caps uh, over the bubblers on all the fountains because part of what we're supposed to do in opening up facilities in this environment is people aren't supposed to be using the water fountain. So these lockout caps go over that part where in the olden days you would drink from. Um, so it just reinforces that's not available for drinking. Um, that's really largely done and will be, will be almost entirely completed this month. But as we've gone through and surveyed all the fountains, there are some odd-sized ones that they're going to have to go back and order a, a different type of cap for. And realistically, those won't, every one of those won't get installed until um, sometime next month. But really, that's largely done. The bottle filler fountain installations, that's the, related to that. You take an existing fountain and you retrofit that with a, with the bottle fill, bottle filler units, which we were already wanting to do and moving in that direction at lots of different schools. Many of you are aware, your PTOs or different groups have done fundraising to, to do bottle fill stations because they were popular before COVID. And we're just advancing that work. So it's not that the schools don't already have some bottle fill stations. Um, but we, we're doing a more comprehensive uh, replacement and holistically addressing them now. Um, Clark, I think, only needs like one more for one fountain near the gym. The high school needs like maybe 20-some because it's a much bigger building, obviously. And then every other school falls somewhere between that one and 20-something that we need to go and get in there and retrofit. Um, and the only reason that's purple is we're going to get that equipment on order and then that, within the next couple of weeks, as soon as I get the final numbers from facilities maintenance on what we need to order. And then it does take just some time to um, get a contractor on board to, to go around and, and, you know, deploy those retrofits as rapidly as possible for the bottle filler, the fillers. Uh, okay, so classroom furniture spacing, um, classroom furniture and spacing to support social distancing. Um, this is something that's well underway, but just, I didn't want to overstate. Um, so realistically, we'll say that by the, you know, during next month, the schools will be wrapping that up. But during, during this month, I went around and started meeting with all the principals and the leadership teams in each school, including nurses, custodians, to talk about our physical, physical preparations. They all were given a checklist. And just um, now that we, you know, we've gone over that first big hump to do, you know, virtual instruction at the level that we're doing it at, now we're shifting focus back to, let's, let's complete the physical preparations that we started this summer. And then um, the cus, along with that is a lot of custom signage that we have in the works for COVID mitigation. And again, almost all of that, all of it will be here by the end of this month, except for these plastic A-frame signs, that the issue is those plastic A-frames are, have actually been a backorder issue um, that they, that we put the signs on. But I've been told we should expect those no later than November the 6th. There is one other mitigation measure that as Caitlin was speaking, I realized I completely left it off. And that is the voice amplification um, system that go around the neck, and it enables you to speak more clearly through a mask without shouting. Uh, those are on order, and I completely, and we, we expect those in, in November, and they've just been ordered. And we test, we tested some out a week or so ago. And I just, um, I forgot, I left that off the chart, and I apologize, but next, next slide. Um, so in summary, supplies have been delivered to all buildings, and an inventory management plan and system is in place to maintain these supplies division-wide. And I think that's really important because it's one thing just to order stuff and get it out there. It's a whole other thing. It's a whole other thing to really be prepared to monitor stock levels, to have systems in place at the building level and the division level to kind of know where we are and make sure that nothing gets ahead of us. And so my my partner in a lot of this, Ms. Julia Green, we've got a system in place that we feel pretty, pretty good about to make sure not only that we have supplies now, but that we could maintain them during more in-person instruction. Individual schools and apart and departments, you know, may need to acquire some additional specific things, primarily plexiglass barriers where it's very situational specific. We have outfitted all the reception areas with plexiglass. We provided portable barriers to schools and departments, but as you know, if every, you know, as we move along, I think it needs to be determined who's really going to use them, how they're going to use them, and then get them sized and so forth appropriately. And for now, we're thinking that will be more of a building level decision. I also want to mention, because this didn't really fit on my chart, but temperature scan, the temperature scanners and electric static sprayers have been purchased by by us for all the buses. And they've, transportation also has installed hand sanitizers like dispenser setups right at the entrance to each bus. So that's done. All of the buses were on the charts. I want people to know that. And then the N95 masks are the only thing that continues to be an availability concern. But that level of masks generally is not recommended for the school settings. And we've had numerous discussions with the health department as recently as my weeks are running together. I can't remember if it was this week or last week, but we had a conference call with the nurses and with Ryan McKay and talked about like what rate of usage we're seeing on, you know, hospital grade PPE at schools and different things like that. And that was a very helpful conversation for all of us. And we're still working through some of these things. I'm not saying we don't need to get more and that we, you know, that we don't want to do more. We're going to get booties and the hair, the head coverings as well. But those things aren't difficult to get. So procedures and protocols will need to be responsive to changing guidance and circumstances. We've already touched on that. The air handling, the mitigation measures recommended by the CDC and ASHRAE, which is the governing body for all things, you know, air, I won't bore you with what that stands for, but you can look it up. All the filtration and ventilation measures are are in place or will be capable of saying we're in compliance with all those by the end of this month. That that next level of measures, those air disinfection measures, which really exceed what would be considered the standard recommendations, those will begin to get rolled out in December. And we will go as fast as we can, depending on the availability, how quickly the equipment comes in. Other mitigation measures do include that effort to work with, and it's First United Methodist Church, as you're aware. We're working through an agreement with them to use their, the the space they normally have when they were operating a preschool. We are, they are graciously working with us to allow us to expand, to move some of our preschool classrooms to that location, which is a really great preschool location in or that will allow us to free up classroom space in our elementary schools to support the smaller class sizes and social distancing. And every minute, again, every mitigation measure we implement in our schools, those things will be will be translated to what happens with this, you know, with any setup at First United Methodist. That it just has to be, that's not optional. So next slide, and the next one is the last one, I believe. And this really touches a little bit on what Ms. Torres said, which we, you know, there's a very long list of things we're doing in the area of mitigation, so much so that even I forget sometimes what they are and leave them off of some of the slides. There's a lot of work in product, there's a lot of work that's been done. There's a lot of work still in progress. But at the end of the day, the truly, I want to remind everyone, the essential measures are masks, hygiene and distancing. And these are all things that we can take personal responsibility for as a community. And they really are, I think, from all, from all sources, the most essential mitigation measures in the situation. So just want to remind everyone of that. The the little sandwich board sign in the bottom corner, it reinforces that. And that happens to be, I think that's the Johnson logo at the bottom. So that's what those signs are going to look like when you see them starting, starting to roll out. That's everything I have for mitigation as far as updating you on the status of where we are with implementing all those things.
Thank you, Kim. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Powell?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In regards to, we discussed the N95, so that was on my list. Will we have ample masks at all times for students? Perhaps many to clean mask or forget their mask and or staff members? Do we have ample supplies of mask?
Yes, I can tell you that like right now, we have, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up my inventory system. We have like over 3,000 masks in stock on top of the, sorry, my, my computer's not moving as fast as I want it to. But I could tell you exactly how many masks we've distributed, how many we have on hand. And fortunately, these aren't things that are difficult to order now. And I have a minimum and a ma, I've set minimum and maximum stock quantities for the division and for each school. And so the way the system works is that all the, all the principals and departments have been informed, like this is the minimum number of masks you should have on hand. So for example, for a smaller department or whatever, it's, it's 50, it's one full box. As soon as the person who's in charge of supplies opens that box of 50, that should trigger them to put in a request into the Google form, which then tells Julia that they need more masks. Now, I don't want them requesting more than three boxes at a time, which is 150 masks. That's at the school or department level. Then at our level, our minimum stock quantity is 1,000. So when Julia and I see it get down to seven or 800, we're going to order some masks to get back up to 1,000. So like, that's, that's what I'm talking about by a system being in place so that things don't get ahead of us. And that's a, that's one example, but we've set those thresholds and we have that system in place for all of these consumable COVID supplies.
Okay, question number two, thank you. How often will those filters, I know like, for example, Charles, some of the classrooms don't have windows. So often will those filters be replaced and also who would be responsible for monitoring this CO2 monitor? How often would that be monitored?
So with regard to the filters, the the city actually has a, I have to be a little bit careful because I don't want to speak incorrectly for our colleagues in city facilities maintenance. But I do know that city facilities maintenance contracts with Riddle Burger Brothers to handle what preventative maintenance on the HVAC system, which includes the filter changes. And ASHRAE has standards for how often those filters should be changed. And I actually was looking at that standard online the other night because with, when you put this denser filter material into your systems, it stands to reason that you might need to change them more often because you're going to have more debris being caught by, you know, these, this, this type of filter media, the higher MERV rated filters. What shocked me, and I, and I'm not enough of an expert to understand this. So it's, I actually sent a question to Jerry about it in facilities maintenance. It actually said that going longer in some cases could be beneficial and I kept reading and I didn't understand it. But the point is, we've got city facilities maintenance and a contractor that they use, that I'm very familiar with, that monitor and assess these things. And I've, I've actually got some questions out to facilities maintenance, just to improve my understanding of that. The request, the item that came up about wanting to have like a sticker or something, this was one of the recommendations, to know when filters are changed. You know, that would have to be, first of all, no one should ever or would ever go inside the HVAC equipment to actually look at a sticker on a filter to see when it was changed. No, none of our staff should do that because to change filters, and especially in this environment, that is a PPE situation and a very, you know, important set of protocols are going to be put in place for the folks who do that to handle filter changes. So I don't know that I've exactly answered your question, but I will tell you that we're keenly aware of the importance of the filter changes and that the necessary protocols have to be in place both to monitor that, monitor when filters should be changed and also to make sure they're changed in a way that it's safe for the people who are handling those filter changes. Your second question.
That was my second question. I have one more.
There was another part.
Oh, the CO2 monitor.
CO2 monitors, that was the other part, yes. I took them in the wrong order. Okay, so the CO2 monitors, what we're looking at there is I've asked for some guidance again from people who work in in that business for handheld, like portable CO2 monitoring units that are reliable, easy to read, easy to use. And what we would do is we'd put that in the office of the school and train the principal, APs, whatever, how, just how to read it, just like you're reading a thermostat, right? This is the temperature, this is the CO2 level. CO2 levels are very dynamic. And honestly, being in a room by yourself versus being in a room with a bunch of people, that drastically changes the CO2 level. So it's dynamic. If you're gonna, if you have a concern, you know, under normal operating conditions. So I'm a teacher and let's say under normal COVID conditions, my classroom now holds 12 students. I don't want to check it. I don't want the monitor to go in when I'm in there by myself. I want the monitor in there when it's me and 12 students to see how how things are looking. What's the CO2 level? Am I getting, you know, a sufficient level of outdoor air exchange? That's what CO2 level is, can be an indicator of, right? So that's something that we are, that came out of the subcommittee that we're looking to do to help people feel empowered and like they can get an answer in the moment as to what's, what's happening with the air in their room. So we, we're going to start with one per building and let people say, look, I have a concern, let me check it out. And then let's see what it looks like when my room is in use. Because you're really looking for things like ventilation and things like that, that's, it's very dynamic. It changes. It's not like a static measurement of that you want to just take a picture of one time and say everything's okay. Does that kind of answer the question? Okay.
Yeah, my final question, I think Mr. Tolly mentioned in her presentation in regards to gowns for the school nurses. And will they have ample supply of gowns? Because sometimes they may have to change two or three times a day, depending on the situation. So there will be ample supplies for those school nurses.
And we started out, you know, when the committee started, we just had like 500, initial order of 500 gowns that had been deployed. We've already ordered our first restock on those so that we now have the central inventory plus what's been deployed to the schools. But until we start to see more students in person, you know, we, we're not pushing out hundreds and hundreds and thousands and thousands of gowns to our sites. But I'm encouraged by the fact that the gowns weren't hard to get. And so, you know, I wanted to be very forthright about what is hard to get right now as far as consumable supplies, and that is in 95 masks. But there are questions about, you know, what is the relevance for those in schools? Ryan McKay and the health department were pretty clear that there's not an expectation that staff in schools, even, you know, even doing personal care need to always be, you know, in garb like you would if you're in the ER for every student that you're attending to. The basically, the guidance was if the student is not what they generating aerosol, in other words, even if a student comes to your office, comes in or is referred to the nurse for a sore throat, right? But they're wearing their mask properly. You know, they are saying that you don't, the nurse doesn't necessarily have to put on a gown for that. If the student is wearing the mask properly and they come to the office with a sore throat and all we're doing is just putting them in the quarantine area until the parent can pick them up, they don't have to just put on the full garb like they're going in the ER. Or, you know, they, they can, you know, they can make want to wear, put on the shield with the mask or goggles or whatever. But, you know, they, they, they had, we had a meeting with the nurses. And if Dr. Baptist wants to chime in, if I'm not covering, expressing this correctly, but that was my takeaway from that. And what we learned from other school districts in our weekly health department call is that they're not going through the gowns and things like that, or nearly like they thought they would. The thing they're using the most of are gloves. They're using gloves at a higher rate, but not the gowns, not the other items. That's, that said, I don't want to, we're still going to be prepared. But I do want to be honest that if there's one thing that I feel like we could run out of and be like, oh, you know, I don't know if I'm going to have them have more in time, it would possibly be the N95s. But, because we will try to have those. One of the things that Ann Sanders mentioned, though, as a substitute for that, it will decay in 95s, we looked at those. But also putting a, putting a disposable mask over like the K95s and things like that. So you have two different masks on at the same time. Sorry, there was a lot there. Beth, did you have anything to add?
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody else have any questions for Kim? Okay, hearing none. I am going to go to 6.3, Dr. Atkins, if you want to introduce our guests about.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. To give the board and our audience an idea of some of the planning that's going on now in our schools by our principals, we've asked Erin Kirschner and Summer Thompson to talk to us about how they will go about staffing and their space utilization based on the staffing and the percentage of students who will return. Erin and Summer, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Dr. Atkins, Chair McKeever and members of the board. Summer and I are going to talk about exactly what Dr. Atkins just said. Our plans for an orientation and how we might staff and use our spaces in different scenarios, depending on the percentage of families who choose to have their children return to learning. You can go ahead and advance. So the elementary principals really appreciated the recommendation from the elementary work group to plan an orientation for our students prior to their full time return. We want to make sure that students have an orientation that helps them bridge the relationships that they've already started forming online to the in-person setting. Some of our youngest learners may not even recognize their teachers when they meet them with masks on and vice versa. As we know, the way we navigate social interactions is different online than in person. And we really want to support students as much as possible making this transition. For our students who've never been in our buildings, we want the first steps they take to be ones that are joyful and supportive. We want to make sure we set everyone up, even those who have been in our buildings before, to experience the new features of the learning environment with the time and attention they deserve to get comfortable and used to their new normal. And I put a picture of a classroom that we've set up that looks like the new normal. Classrooms will look different, the way we move, the way we organize our materials will be more carefully orchestrated than it has been in the past. Our staff will also need an opportunity to practice all the new protocols and routines multiple times in order to have them become as automatic as possible. To that end, we're proposing that we bring students into our buildings using a schedule that allows for small groups to be introduced to their new learning environments, but on a fairly efficient timeline. So we don't lose pace with learning. Next slide. On this slide, you'll see some examples of some of the new signage and procedures that we'll be following in all of our buildings, to name a few. Maintaining six feet of distance, scanning temperatures upon arrival or getting on the bus, using the water coolers only to fill water bottles rather than using the fountain, as Kim already talked about. The smaller groups I referred to on the last slide are outlined on this slide. We're proposing four cohorts for our elementary students for this orientation period only. Cohort A would be half of our youngest learners in each of the buildings. So half of our pre-K to first grade and half of our fifth grade. Cohort B is the complement to cohort A, the other half. Cohort C is half of our older learners in each of the buildings. So half of our second through fourth graders and half of our sixth graders. While cohort D is the complement to cohort C. The idea is that each class of 10 to 14 students would be divided in half so that they can come to school and be with their teacher in a group of five to seven students. Think of it as another meet and greet with a few more friends. The timeline that we're proposing offers each of our small groups a full day of orientation prior to the whole class coming together in their new space. So you can advance to the next slide, it has the timeline on it. You already heard the recommendation from the elementary work group regarding the week of January 4th being a week of asynchronous learning to allow teachers to move to their new teaching spaces if applicable and for all to get their spaces organized and prepared for students. On January 11th, we would bring cohort A, that half of our pre-K to first grade and fifth graders into the buildings for in-person orientation, while their cohort B peers have an asynchronous learning day. This represents bringing 20% of the students into the building on that first day. Our older learners would continue with their typical virtual learning schedule that we've been following all fall. On January 12th, we would flip flop, so cohort B comes to school while cohort A has an asynchronous day. Then all of our youngest learners come to the buildings altogether on the 13th and 14th. Fridays would remain asynchronous, so we would bring in the next small group cohort C on January 19th, cohort D on the 20th, and then all of our pre-K through sixth grade students would be in our buildings on January 21st.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us here tonight. So I'm going to run you through a little bit about what staffing would look like and then our space utilization. So this table that you're seeing right now articulates what staffing would look like at various percentages of in-person enrollment. And this shows across all six elementary schools and it would be for a four day per week return to in-person learning. So to orient you to this a little bit, the first column indicates the percentage of face-to-face enrollment and we included that 55% because we And we included that 55% because we actually were told that only 50% of students in Henrico County returned for in-person learning, which was very surprising to us to hear. And so we wanted to make sure we were really exploring all possible scenarios so that we can be as accurate as possible in what we're sharing with you. And then obviously for our own preparation purposes as well. So the second column shows how many face-to-face classroom teachers we would need at each of those percentages to staff the number of student cohorts that we have to have based on keeping them in groups of no more than 12. And for some schools, uh, just based on the dimensions of their rooms that they can only house about 10 students. Uh, the third column shows the total number of classroom teachers that we currently have in kindergarten through fourth grade. So obviously that's not going to change based on the in-person enrollment. Uh, and then the fourth column is the difference between the number of in-person classroom teachers that we need and the number of classroom teachers that we currently have. And then the fifth column shows the number of teachers that we would need to teach virtually at each percentage. Uh, so it's really important to note that these last two columns are not staffing deficits. Rather, they're indicative of the number of existing instructional personnel as in individuals who are already working in our schools, who would need to potentially be repurposed as either face-to-face or virtual classroom teachers. And so again, while those numbers might look high, when you consider the aggregate, when you average them out over all six elementary schools, it actually ends up being about at the 85% level, that would be eight to nine people per school who would be repurposed. At the 75% level, it would be eight people, 65%, six to seven people. And at 55%, only four to five people would need to be repurposed as classroom teachers. And then I also do want to note, and this came up earlier, that the number of virtual teachers in that last column is based on each school's need at each individual grade level. And so that number could potentially decrease if we were to create either some cross-grade level classes within a school. So maybe making a K1 class, um, or if we were to look at any sort of cross-school grouping. All right. Next slide, please. All right. So we also wanted to sort of break it down for you and show you what this would look like at an individual school. And so this table is organized exactly the same way as the previous one was. But at least the way that my brain worked, I could understand a little bit more about what it would look like at the school level in this way. So again, this is predicated upon the number of cohorts that we would need to maintain that six feet of distance within a classroom. So at Johnson, most of our rooms can hold about 12 students. So the numbers that you're seeing are based on 12 children or fewer in a classroom. One thing to note is that in that 55% scenario, we need fewer face-to-face teachers, which is why we're at a negative one in the second to last column. So the 10 in the last column would actually be a nine as we repurpose that extra classroom teacher that we don't need for in-person. And then also focusing on that last column again, uh, specific to Johnson. Again, if I were to create a few cross-grade level classes at the 55% enrollment, I would be able to reduce my virtual teacher need by two people. So that's a look at the elementary level and Dr. Kirschner is going to share what this looks like at Walker.
We pulled Walker out separately because their configuration is a little bit different from the pre-K to four elementaries. You'll notice on this chart on the left-hand side, um, under that first column, there's something called working enrollment. And what working enrollment refers to is students served in the general education classroom at Walker. Walker has a number of self-contained special education programs. They've been removed from these calculations as their staffing would be totally separate and contained within their program. Currently, and that's highlighted on the far right, Walker has 32 homeroom teachers. The total number of homeroom teachers needed for both virtual and face-to-face options is listed in the far right column. So you'll notice in each of the scenarios from 85 to 75 to 65 to 55, Walker would be utilizing licensed personnel repurposed, um, that other than homeroom teachers to cover either a virtual or a face-to-face class with the fewest needing to be repurposed at the 55% return scenario. Next slide.
Okay, that's me again. All right. So we've talked about this a little bit, but in all of the above scenarios, there is potential for some instructional staff to be used as classroom teachers, whether that's in-person or virtually. Um, and that is really completely dependent upon the number of students that want to return in person. And this was also mentioned earlier in the meeting, but it bears repeating. Because we are increasing the number of student cohorts in order to keep the class sizes smaller, there will be some scenarios in which students may need to be rerostered, meaning that they may need to be moved into a different classroom. Um, and please know that we really, really want to limit that as much as possible. And we're going to work with teams to minimize those moves. And then at the same time, looking at individual student needs to create the best possible outcome if a placement change is necessary. We want to recognize all the work that our students did, or that our teachers did in establishing really strong relationships since September. And so we want to try to minimize moves as much as we possibly can. So if an individual is not a classroom teacher, there is potential for them to be used flexibly within the building. This could be something that they are regularly assigned to do or something that might happen more of a spur of the moment situation. So for example, uh, there might be a situation where one particular individual is assigned to deliver lunches to an entire grade level. And that would just be part of their normal schedule. Um, on the flip side, it might also look like there is a sudden need that arises in the building. And so we're going to ask someone to make a last minute schedule change to help support that need. We also wanted to address the idea of adult transitions between student cohorts or between locations within the, uh, within the school. Our first priority is to keep our students and staff safe. So that if any staff members are moving between classrooms and groups of students, we want to ensure that we have various mitigation measures in place. Um, and some of these might include obviously hand washing between locations. We would create protocols and scenarios where adults would have carts or baskets or something to transport the materials that they need between rooms so that teachers are not sharing common things like a dry erase marker, um, just to limit again that contact piece. And then we would also have protocols in place that would involve cleaning of any materials that absolutely had to be shared before those materials would be used by somebody else. All right. Next slide, please. All right. Space utilization. So the exact spaces that will be used at each school will really vary. Um, and that's going to be dependent again upon each individual school percentage of, uh, schools' percentage of face-to-face enrollment. There were some questions earlier from the board members about this. But really until we have more information on exactly who's going to be in person and what those numbers look like at each school, it's really challenging to make predictions about how close to a full capacity that we actually would be. Our goal is certainly to use all of our regular classroom spaces first, uh, but I'll give you a scenario. So at Johnson, we have 21 classrooms. Um, at the 85% in-person return scenario, I would need 23 classroom spaces. So that in that scenario, I would need to either relocate a specialist or specialists from a classroom side space, or I would need to find another location to house, um, some cohorts of children. So again, with that, there is the potential that we may need to use some of the larger spaces within the building as classroom spaces. Spaces like the library, the gym, cafeteria, stage, locations like that. And then there's also the potential that we may use some of the unused classroom spaces. There will be classroom spaces like a music room and art room, uh, spaces that would be more typically communal spaces that we won't be able to use as communal spaces. And so those could transition into, uh, like just cohort classroom spaces. I will say that in all of our space considerations and all of our planning, we are working to ensure that students have access to a sink either within the room or really close by the room so that they'll be able to regularly wash their hands. That's a priority for us. And then any unused spaces that we have, if there are any, we will be using for furniture storage. However, again, we have a, if you've ever been in an elementary classroom, which we all obviously have, there is, there are, we all love our kidney tables. We love our little breakout space table. So there is a lot of furniture that's going to need to be stored. And so there is the potential that we may need to use some off-site locations for furniture storage. All right. Next slide, please. All right. Moving forward, um, I'm sure that we can all acknowledge that there are still many details that need to be worked out. But we have a solid plan that we, that will allow us to really continue to provide a robust and high-quality learning experience for all of our kids, whether they are physically in our building or if they're joining us virtually, if we are giving them air hugs across the room because they're with us or if we're giving them air hugs across the screen. Um, and that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you, Summer and Erin. And Ms. McKeever will be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thompson and Dr. Kirschner. Appreciate your, um, really hard work. I think this is like critical for parents to begin to kind of wrap their heads around. So, um, I know that's really hard work and, but much appreciated. Do any of the board members have any comments or questions to start with?
This is Juan Wade. I really don't have a question. I just thought it was really clear. I liked the way it was broken down for what it would look like at a district and then looking at, you know, um, at a school level. Particularly, you know, like, um, Summer said it, my school has 21 classes. If we're at 85%, I'm going to need 23. That's, those are like, that's something I can envision, really envision. And I know that we just won't know until we hear from the parents or the students of what the, you know, in-person numbers will, will look like. So I just, you know, I just feel like with all the information that we received tonight, that when whoever is going to decide to be in the building, that we're going to be well-prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Anything else?
I have a quick question, Madam Chair. Um, and this might be for Dr. Atkins. When do you anticipate, um, surveying, uh, families to find out who wants to return in person and who wants to continue virtually?
That's a great question. We're in the process of, of, um, talking with, um, someone who used to be on our staff and works at UVA now, who has some experience in developing effective surveys. So Beth Chuck is, is reaching out now. We're also looking at some other school divisions and they've had some effective surveys and meaningful data that they gathered. So we're in the process of developing that now. As soon as the board makes the decision, um, that, here's my recommendation in November and makes a decision as to when we can return face-to-face, we will send that survey out, um, probably within a day or two of the board making the decision to get back the information.
That was just one of the, um, recommendations of the, I think a couple of the subcommittees of the committee was to have, you know, somebody who is well-versed in developing effective surveys, develop the survey. It's just so critical. We get good data and that we're communicating effectively with the parents because we just don't want parents to be misled or just misunderstand the questions that we're asking. And so I just really appreciated that, um, feedback from the committee. And I think, um, you know, Dr. Atkins, I appreciate that you're going and actually following through on that, that recommendation and, and finding a way to get, um, a meaningful data that we need.
I would also, um, I would just like to express, uh, my appreciation for you guys for this work. It really, it really helps the way that you laid it out. It really helps to get a sense of, um, how this is going to work at the building level. And, um, one of the things, uh, I guess regarding the survey, I guess, I think I remember seeing that, uh, we are saying that if, uh, if a family chooses, um, virtual, that they cannot then change their mind for the rest of the year. So I think it would.
That was one of the recommendations.
Yeah. So I guess that's something that we need to vote on. Is that, is that true or, um, seems like we.
Recommendation from Dr. Atkins first about, you know, and then we'll, you know, certainly, um, it's, I, I just don't want to give the impression that what the committee said is exactly what's going to happen.
Right.
But that, um, maybe it is, but we also want to make sure that we're being, you know, that all of this is discussed first.
Absolutely. Yeah. But I would think that would be a very important thing for families to, to, um, be aware of if that is the direction that we go in, um, that we won't be able to have a lot of moving around after we do this.
Dr. Craft, when we developed that, um, and we're calling it a survey, but it will be an intent survey that we're doing or an intent, um, um, survey to gather that information. And parents will be making a declaration at that point as to what they are opting into for the model of, of, um, whether it's face-to-face or continuation with virtual. And we will put some descriptors at the top. Before we ask the question, we will remind parents that they are opting in for the rest of the school year and that they, other caveats that are particular to, uh, help them to make the decision whether to come back face-to-face or remain virtual. Uh, we will also remind all of our families, we will have limited capacity in our buildings. Uh, as you've heard from both of our principals laying it out, we will have limited transportation capacity and we will also have limited building capacity.
Thank, thank you.
Who else had a comment? Great.
Jennifer, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer, I do. Um, Dr. Atkins, uh, thank you so much for, um, understanding the importance of explaining the survey and the intent form. Because often you can ask a question and I may interpret it one way and you may interpret it another way. So by having, um, the team that you are currently developing to do the survey, I feel comfortable that it will be asked in a manner that everyone can understand. Although we read the same thing, ultimately I will be able to get the type of information that I need from everybody and knowing that you will have in place people to assist, uh, if there is a question about the survey. So I just wanted to say, um, thank you for reaching out to, um, an objective team of survey development.
Thank you, Ms. Purry.
Anybody else? Ms. Torres?
Yes, thank you. Um, just was curious if, if somebody could share and if this is not, we can carry it to another time if possible, but since we, we asked Ms. Lee to speak a little bit to the special ed, the introduction of, of kids, you know, students with IEPs back into the buildings right now. I was just curious how that process is going, how the process, um, as far as, I guess, teachers do anticipate that, that enough teachers will be available or, um, able and willing to return to the classroom, whether HR is involved in this at all? And, and if we could just speak to that a little bit.
So Kim, I'm going to ask you to talk about your meeting with, um, the special education department recently. And then I'll give some data on the numbers, uh, what we have currently.
Thank you. So, um, I'm, when I had a, two, offered two Zoom sessions yesterday afternoon along with Katrina Lee and, and the sped coordinators to just hear from the sped staff about what their questions and concerns are as we are seeking to serve the most vulnerable populations. And of course, that involves a lot of our special educator, special educators. We, you know, answered some questions there on the phone, took a, a snap of the chat. And, uh, I'm working on a Q and A document to, um, which we will get out by tomorrow evening in order to just keep working through their questions and concerns. I think there was some confusion about the communications early on where that, there, there were communications that went to the sped teachers who were, you know, needing to start work with, work with the students, um, in person. And those didn't go out to every sped teacher at the same time because not, not all of the teachers were going to be in, you know, coming in to do in-person instruction. I think that maybe caused some confusion, but, um, we're working through all of that to try to, you know, get all the communications out and to get the understanding at, you know, at the same level across the board.
So currently we have 29 students, um, that are back in the building. One physical therapist, four speech, but, uh, speech pathologists, 13 teachers and seven IAs that are currently in the building. They will be reviewing some additional IEPs and making some determinations as to whether or not the student needs the face-to-face or, um, that's the least restrictive environment for the student. HR has again encouraged all of our teachers to, if they have a, um, want to make a request for medical reasons to continue virtual, that they submit a request to HR. And HR has been receiving some of those requests from staff. Keith, you want to speak to what you've received and how you process those?
Yes, Dr. Atkins. Um, we, we have a process to where if you are requesting the virtual, to telework, that you put a request in writing to your direct supervisor, your building principal. to telework, that you put a request in writing to your direct supervisor, your building principal, that person would then forward that request to the Human Resources Department. We would then contact the employee to see if there's any additional documentation that we need. We send them a letter acknowledging that we have their requests. We pull together a committee to review the request and to see if it's a request we can, uh, accommodate. There's three conditions that we are able to accommodate for, which is if it's a direct medical condition, if it's a condition that's related to a COVID-19 closure, or if it's a condition related to childcare. So those are the three conditions in which you can request to telework. And, uh, once we, uh, gather all the documentation, we look at it and at the appropriate time, we would make, um, we would acknowledge the employee with your request has been approved in a formal document or that your request would not be able to be approved at this time.
Ms. Breis and Worsberger? Oh, I thought I saw you raising your hand. Okay.
Ms. Torres, did we answer all of your question?
I believe so. I mean, I appreciate hearing that. I mean, and I, uh, assume I'm, I'm way removed from all of this that, you know, the teachers are aware of that process. But I'm sure there's probably some, um, teachers who don't quite fall into, you know, having a personal, um, medical reason or risk, you know, might have family members, extended family members, parents, you know, in their homes that are higher risk. I mean, how, how are we dealing with those, those teachers? Or how, you know, how can we support them in this crazy environment?
Once we make the decision as to what the return to learn model is going to look like, I do believe that we will have the need for, uh, teleworking, virtual teaching to continue, uh, the number, to service the number of students who will elect to, uh, continue with virtual. The number of teachers that will be needed for that will exceed the number of teachers who have requested leave for one of those three reasons that Dr. Hubbard just stated. So then we'll talk to the teachers about what, uh, specific, we'll handle it on an individual basis. And we will make a match between what our student needs are and what the requests are. We'll look at grade levels and the particulars and try and as far as we can to make a match between what the teacher is asking and what our student needs are.
Great. Thank you.
Are we serving the, surveying the teachers that, I mean, it, it seems like the teachers having to reach out to Dr. Hubbard specifically or their principals, but I, I, I wondered, I thought one of the things that we were hoping to do is maybe survey the teachers as well, just so that we can get a baseline there as well.
We are. Um, we need to right now give teachers, um, access to requesting the leave, especially for those students who are coming in with special education or for any purpose they're coming into the building. Uh, so we need to give teachers access to HR to make that request now. While, once we get the intent from our families, we'll also be getting intent and, um, survey information from our teachers so that they will have an opportunity at that point to, um, indicate which one they would prefer.
Great. Is that all you have, Ms. Torres?
Dr. Atkins, do we feel like, and I know you had talked, um, we were on the phone or debriefing after the COVID committee about the timeline, you know, and how you need to walk this back. Do we feel like we have enough time to really, um, give teachers and families enough time, three, four weeks' notice before we return to school? Or is that-
With the, um, the committee's recommendation for returning, the dates that they have used?
Yes, let's go with that.
Yes. Yeah. We have looked at those dates and done some backward mapping, asked our principals to do backward mapping. There may be some tweaks that we will have to make. Uh, we actually, um, Summer and Erin, after, um, conferring with the other principals, asked the elementary committee to make one adjustment to their recommendation if they would consider. Originally that committee recommended that, um, the student orientation take place in December before the winter break. Our principals have asked that that, um, recommendation be moved to January rather than December. Um, after doing the backward mapping, that was a much more feasible timeline, uh, for them than the December date. So we'll be doing a lot of planning and, um, mapping as we go forward. I anticipate that, uh, our next steps will be that we'll continue between now and the November 5th board meeting. We'll continue to gather information. Um, Kim has given you all of the protocols. We're developing those protocols. All of the videos are being developed. Uh, we'll start working with transportation. The intent survey will be ready, uh, so that we can send that out, uh, after the recommendation and the board takes action and start moving a plan forward, um, based on the vote of the board.
You, one more quick, hopefully quick HR question, please. Um, was just curious if, if teachers and hopefully there's enough spots for everybody to kind of fall into and, and find a place to continue, um, working, but will, or do we anticipate there will be any teachers who are going to request or, or is it even possible to request, um, time off, you know, unpaid time off and, and maintain their job when they come back, when, if they don't feel safe returning?
Well, currently there's not a, um, you can always request FMLA for other conditions that you may have if you're taking care of a family member. That's not a COVID request because it doesn't fall into those three categories. So the other leave categories that are already as, uh, adopted by the board in board policy are the ones we would honor, but we don't have anything other than that at this time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Hello. See, yes.
Oh, sorry. Um, and maybe I missed it. So the three conditions were, if the person had like a, a, a medical condition themselves, if there was an exposure, and I forget the third one, but did, um, any of the conditions include like if you're caring for someone who's at risk or live with someone who's a higher risk, like a spouse? I'm sorry.
It doesn't sound like it based on what-
And that those, that is not a qualifying condition under the COVID, uh, the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act right now. The only three conditions are the ones that I shared, but we would definitely look at case-by-case, um, scenarios as Dr. Atkins shared. Right now, the amount of teachers that have requested to, um, teach in a telework environment only i- is not a super large number. Um, it's less than 30 at the current, uh, time. So I think we'd be able to accommodate, but once again, it depends on need. It depends on, uh, what parents are going to, uh, request when they, to send their children back and how we can then staff to, to fill these positions. But right now, we don't have a super large request, um, from our teachers. We have less than 30 teachers that have requested telework at this current state. And we sent the, we sent the documentation out to start this process, actually August the 20th of this year.
Was that via email or how was that communicated?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe, maybe we can blast it out to them again. I mean, I think this would be really important to get a sense of, of where staff is at and comfort levels.
We, we did send an email out to all CCS employees on August the 20th, and we have resent that to, uh, building-level supervisors, but we can resend that out to staff members as well.
Yeah, I would, I would just think that, um, knowing exactly what our mitigation efforts and our protocols are would be important to teachers in making that decision. And it seems like, you know, we've done a wonderful job of putting, uh, setting a very high standard. And I would hope that that would, um, really help teachers feel comfortable returning, but I would think that they, they, you know, I think this would be a good time now that we're laying all of these things out very clearly, uh, for them to know what they'd be coming back to.
We will get a communication out, um, and we can resend all of that information. Um, we want to make sure that it's aligned with the intent forms that we'll send to our staff, uh, so that they will have all of that information at one time.
Okay. So I think, um, what I, what I'm hearing is that there is, uh, you know, interest in understanding if, uh, you know, how many teachers, you know, feel still like have those conditions, but also, um, if there's any above that who are, who have some other concerns that maybe those three conditions don't qualify. But also I think if we out, since we've been outlining our mitigation strategy, we've had, um, teachers be, um, part of this process. I think it, um, I do think that there is, there may be less teachers now, you know, honestly, who are concerned. Um, as you know, there may be more, maybe less, but I, I just, like, I feel like the 30 number back in August or even September is, um, it's, it's information, but it may not be the most up-to-date, given how this is a dynamic that constantly changes. So, um, right now with our numbers and the, in the community being pretty low.
The first, the, the, the letter was sent out to all employees in August, but we've had different requests since August. And we've had different requests within the past two weeks. So requests have been coming in since we've sent out the letter. They all didn't just come in at one time in August. They've been coming in periodically throughout this entire process.
Good. Well, I'm glad that means, that means that it's definitely reaching teachers. So, um, thank you so much for your efforts. Any other questions around, for Dr. Kersher, Ms. Thompson, around building space utilization? Okay. Um, just again, want to say thank you to, to you and your, um, other principals who no doubt have had some input on that. And we recognize how, um, critical you are in, um, ensuring a safe return to the building. And, uh, we really appreciate and understand the pressure that that mean, that is. And, uh, thank you. It's not something any of us signed up for. And you guys, again, are always, um, going above and beyond. So thank you so much. Um, Dr. Atkins, I think, um, that is the items. I, I, I want to also give an opportunity for our board to have any, um, input that they may have that maybe they haven't yet indicated. And do you think this is an appropriate time or do you got to wait for the board member comments, like after public comment? Or do you have any thoughts on that?
I would love to hear from the board if there's additional information that the board may need in order to be able to make a decision. Or any other direction or, or, or data that the board might desire or comments from the board.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that's, do, um, any of the board members have any comments for Dr. Atkins that can help her and her team kind of draft a recommendation over the next couple of weeks? That's amazing. We stand adjourned.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for, um, taking my questions and concerns, um, specifically around our, our staff and our teachers. And I think that's, that's crucial and vital for us to get a, a more accurate, um, pulse and read, you know, on, on where everybody's at, you know, and I, I'd hate for us to be surprised last minute with a bunch of resignations or positions that we couldn't fill. So I feel like, um, me, you know, my security and making, or, or confidence in making a decision, you know, that's a crucial piece for me that I would love to and hope that we have a better sense of.
We'll tell you, um, Ms. Torres, that Henrico County, when they sent out their survey, that was an important component on their survey. And they asked a lot of questions of their teachers, what their intent would be or what their desire would be. And, and it would be our intent to include that on our, uh, survey intent also.
Thank you.
Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, uh, this has been a real education for me. I feel like it's a whole different universe of issues and things that, you know, a lot of which I don't know much about at all. But I, I feel like, you know, like we've heard from parents who are impatient and frustrated with, um, you know, how long this is taking and why can't we start back, uh, face-to-face sooner? Um, and I feel like, you know, with all of these presentations and all of the work that, uh, you guys have put into this, I, I feel like for me, I feel more comfortable with the timeline that we're setting out because I really understand what's going into it, all of the preparations, all of the details. You know, there's so many things that are different than the way we usually do business. And I think it's important for, you know, our whole community to, to understand that. So, you know, I want to say, you know, I, you know, I feel, um, you know, I, I feel like this is the right timeline and for us, given the high standards that we're setting uh, for our division. And, and I really appreciate those high standards, um, and I hope that others do too. And I guess my, my one, I don't know, this is just a comment, I guess. Um, you know, from some of the parents that we've heard from that tell us how much their students are struggling with the virtual and how dejected they are and, you know, things like that. We're not hearing that across the board. But I, I wonder if there are any other ways that we could be reaching out to some of those students, you know, to help them hang in there. Um, I don't know if there are any creative ways that we could be doing that. But I just want to throw that out there, um, as, as a thought.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. We are working with, um, uh, some community members who have submitted proposals for mentoring and providing, uh, services for some of our students. And so, uh, we are, um, going to pursue a relationship with the city, where the city could, um, offer some support in, in, um, getting a contract and getting mentors underway. And we would also match what they're doing to provide that support for our students, uh, to the extent that we can.
I would hope like, in my opinion, um, as a, you know, parent of two children in the orchestra, like if we could just have some fine artists or like some of these elective things that could be done outside before the weather gets terrible, you know, that we could do in a really safe way. Um, I just, I just feel like, uh, you know, with athletics starting because of VHSL, I think we can find and should find opportunities to, um, to have, you know, with teachers who are willing and with students who are willing, not mandatory voluntary, um, opportunities for, um, for meeting up outside with masks. And, um, you know, I just, that, that's what I was kind of point, thinking of that Dr. Kraft was talking about. But, you know, obviously I think the mentor thing is great. That, that not, that's not at all what I'm suggesting. I'm just saying, like, uh, we had that email today about the PE and I thought, oh, well, you could do PE outside, you know, with like half your kids, you know, one day a week or something. I, again, providing the opportunity for flexibility that the teachers act in a safe way outside, limited amount of time with masked students, especially at the high school level, because like presumably they have a little bit more understanding of why you are wearing a mask. Um, but anyway, that's just kind of what I was, um, that's what I was thinking about what, uh, is just providing the opportunity for some voluntary meetups outside around a shared classroom activity.
Thank you, Ms. McKee.
Anyway, sorry, this is tangent.
Dr. Atkins, Dr. Atkins, I have a question. Um, you are very thoughtful in your manner and thinking about everyone, our students, our family, and all of the people that work for CCS. Do you feel that when we make our decision, you've talked to us about lead time. I understand that, okay? And when we make a decision next month, that we will have done everything that we need to do to ensure that we've given all of the people involved, the staff, the instructors, the families, sufficient time- the families, sufficient time to roll out the suggested dates that were presented this evening, if that proposal comes forth? I don't, I don't know how long all of these things take, because I just can't imagine doing what you do. But I did hear Dr. Hubbard speak about the letter that was sent in August, and how things have gradually begun to trickle in. And I know how important gentle reminders are. So if I'm getting an email on the sixth or the seventh, a general reminder to say, if you have any questions about this metric, if you need to submit a request, we're here to help you, what that process looks like. I'm not saying that it has not been done, but I'm just saying a little gentle reminder or refresher for something that I received in August. And I may have been in one space in August, and now in October, I'm in another space. Do you think that we are giving ourselves enough time?
Ms. Perrier, what I am pleased about is that the recommendations that are coming forward are not recommendations that have been made in isolation. There has been a committee, work groups that have spent a number of hours working on those recommendations. Our principals have looked at those recommendations, and they have spent hour upon hour looking at those recommendations, doing scheduling and backward mapping and, and establishing timelines to see how feasible is that, and giving us information about the realities of how they can implement that timeline. So when we make a recommendation, it's going to be one that is based on input from a variety of stakeholders, constituents, that have carefully looked at this situation. When you think about the mitigation and all of the work, the, the work group and the recommendations that they have made, and now taking those recommendations and benchmarking it against, where are we in our school division? So all of that is underway and will continue. So when we bring a recommendation to you in November, it will represent the collective thoughts of our community, our parents, teachers, our administrators, our principals, and a whole host of stakeholders. And the reality of being able to effectively implement and adhere to that timeline if the conditions remain viable to implement that timeline.
Thank you. I felt that in my heart, but it just makes it easier for my head to understand that. And I hope that everybody that's listening or looking heard what you said, because I can't imagine, I, I, I just can't begin to imagine how daunting this is. And I've been reading and rereading and every little thing that comes out on our emails, COVID-19 update, okay, what does this mean? COVID-19, click here, click there. I just, I just can't imagine. I, it, it just, it just boggles my mind. And I just want to say thank you to you and everyone on the COVID-19 committee, whoever you are, wherever you are. The work that you have done is just simply amazing. And I'm going to spend whatever time it takes between now and November 5th to make the best decision for everyone involved. And again, thank you.
Ms. Perrier, thank you too. And I also want to say Beth Baptist and Kim Powell, I cannot tell you how valuable it is to have them as active members of the team. Today at 1:00, they were on a meeting with the Department of Health, the, our local Department of Health, receiving the latest information on CDC guidelines. And immediately, they started to implement and started to discuss the implications of those guidelines to our situation and our return to learn. So Beth, thank you. And Kim, thank you for everything that you've done and how you keep us up to date.
Yeah, we definitely couldn't have done it without, without them. And Dr. Atkins' leadership, it's just been critical. Who else has a comment?
I just had a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Atkins, I certainly want to thank you for giving us that great summation that has gone out to the public. So they too will be in sync in terms of what the decision that we're going to have to make as a board. And certainly, kudos, I just can, because there was just so much information coming in, and reading all this stuff and writing, taking notes. Certainly, the COVID committee spent countless hours in making this easy on the board to come up with good questions to ask. Certainly, the Building Spaces and Utilization Committee, Kim and Beth, all of your hard work, just everybody working together. So hopefully, the teachers will now get a sense of all the hard work that's been done, so that we can bring you safely back into the building with our wonderful students and staff. So eventually, not all at once, like to have them all come together at the same time. But it's, it's, it's been amazing. I mean, I felt after this meeting tonight, I felt a lot, I felt like my stress level has just gone down because I said, oh, my God, we got a big decision on this. And it's, it's so much stuff to cover. But I think you summarized it very well, Dr. Atkins. And I think the public, hopefully, they were listening, that this is a collective decision with everyone in the community, and the staff, and the, and the principals, and doing those schedules. It's just a lot. So thank you so much for just summarizing it so that the public will, will know that we are, we're willing to move forward eventually to make a decision.
Anyone else? I don't see anybody else. So does that help you? Does that help guide you a little bit?
It does. Yes.
Great.
And Dr. Atkins, don't feel afraid to reach out if you need something between now and then, you know, you know, you, you, you can call us at old dark 30, okay? We'll respond, we promise.
Wonderful. I thought Kim was the only one that responds to me in the middle of the night.
Y'all need to get some sleep. Okay, um, so I think, yeah, I, I just want to acknowledge, I mean, we're going to go into public comment, but we've also received a bunch of emails. So I, I'm going to get to them all. But I really just appreciate the public comment from emails as well. And, you know, Dr. Atkins is privy to all of those emails as well, informing her recommendation, which we will hear on November 5th. So we look forward to that. And so let's go into comments from members of the community, Dr., I mean, Mr. Cuomo, if you're ready for that.
Okay, I do see some hands starting to raise. So I'll start there and then turn it back over to you for any follow-up. But again, just put your hand up in the attendees list or type that you'd like to speak in the chat, which we are enabling now. So right now, I have Beth Icke.
Can I just make one more? I mean, before we, before Ms. Icke starts, I just want to say, you know, this is, thank you for your comments. We are, you have three minutes. And yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, and thanks to everyone engaging here on behalf of our kids. I wanted to make sure I acknowledge the Herculean efforts of staff thus far. These folks have really labored to make virtual learning as successful as possible. I know it's not working out great for everyone, but I think there are some success stories out there. And I wanted to make a special shout out to elementary COVID committee member and avocado dance master Ernest Chambers. Just yesterday, my second grader told me how much she was enjoying her PE classes. And I commented that PE seemed like the hardest class to have virtually, and she whirled around and then told me, no way. Mr. Chambers is awesome and knows how to use his computer so well. He is a screen sharing master and makes everything so much fun. I know Mr. Chambers is not alone in being a-
Answer the phone, Wanda. Well, pick it up and say hello.
I know he's not alone in being a screen share, a super screen sharing. I just want to make sure the educators know how much we parents-
Just tell him, Ma, but just hang up.
-your efforts at this time. As Ms. Perrier mentioned, you folks are working so hard to provide the best quality education possible during these pandemic times. So much effort has already gone into and continues to go into making virtual learning a reality. Rushing back into the classroom feels disrespectful to those who are making virtual education happen for our kids. It also feels foolish to consider opening in advance of an expected uptick in COVID infections this winter. Concern for our teachers and their health, really, everyone's health is on my mind. I know some educators are anxious to return to school, but I recognize that many are not. I'm concerned about unfair pressure some teachers may feel to return to an environment where they will be at risk, especially with the facilities and mitigations reports we've heard. It strikes me that staying virtual through the winter months, when a surge of infections is all but guaranteed, and planning for a possible return after spring break might make the most sense. As mentioned in bold in the facilities committee presentation, we need adequate time to prepare for a safe return. I feel slowing down and waiting until March would allow us to do more outdoors when we go back, and really take advantage of the outdoor spaces we have. I loved, there was at least one mention of tents. I think we've got some generous tent companies in town that would be happy to help us make outdoor spaces more viable. And in general, I just ask that we're making sure we're carefully preparing and not rushing into something that still carries significant risk. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Icke. I appreciate your comments. Ms. Cuomo, anybody else?
Um, right now, there is nobody else on the attendees list at the time with their hand raised and nothing in the chat. Oh, we do have a hand raised. And listed as Annie Settle, and I'm just giving that user the ability to unmute.
Okay. Hi, I'm Annie Settle. I, along with Beth, am a Burnley Moran parent. And so I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Chambers. My kindergartner is really loving softball. So we've got some awesome, awesome creative workarounds happening. I do also want to echo the thanks to the teachers and the staff who have been on sort of the virtual front lines, and he would be on the actual front lines to the administration, school board, the volunteer committee. Thank you, everyone. I will say, my, my comments are maybe focused a bit more on what could potentially happen in the spring. I was, I was very concerned that there was basically no mention of any outside time for our kids. I, I heard a comment about, don't worry, your kids will be in one classroom all day except recess, which I, I appreciate for the winter months in terms of, you know, the idea that they're not going to be moving around class to class all over school. But that does worry me, especially as we get into the spring, where we really could take advantage of being outside. I don't want to be a Monday morning quarterback, but I feel like the fall could have been a missed opportunity. And I want to make sure that that's not the case, that we're not just writing off the spring. I heard a lot about how we're going to get fresh air inside the building, but I didn't hear a lot about how we're going to get kids outside into that fresh air. And I recognize that all school outside areas are not equal, that elementary school might be easier than as you get to the upper grades. But I would like to hear how we are going to plan to do everything from PE to lunch to recess to specials, to read aloud, to individual projects outside, you know, under tents, on blankets. You can see, you know, you always do is look on Facebook to see how other schools from pre-K all the way up to college are doing outside learning in a safe and effective way. And I, and I think it can be done. It requires a little bit of flexibility, creative, out of the box thinking, some trial and error, and that's what we need to be doing. So I think before we can make any informed decisions as parents as to what we're going to commit to do for the rest of the year, I'd like to know not just what we heard tonight, which seems to be very much geared towards winter months, January, February, and into March, but what we would be able to do, whether or not we are able to go back in person, face to face in January and February. What are potential plans for when the weather does get better? How are we going to take advantage of that fresh air? And to the extent that we are going to stay virtual, I would also advocate that we give the teachers as much flexibility and as many resources as possible to do small groups and one-on-ones. That, to me, has been the most effective thing that my kids have experienced. 15 kids on a Zoom is kind of chaotic, kind of hard to manage. So the extent to which we can really give them the flexibility to get those smaller groups and the one-on-ones, as long as we're in virtual, I would strongly advocate that. So that is all, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Settle. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Cuomo, anybody else?
There are no other hands up at this time. Nothing in the chat box.
Okay, great. So we're going to take a moment and see if anybody can raise their, if anybody has a, anybody would like to make a comment at this time, this would be the opportunity to do so. And I'll give you another couple seconds to raise your hand in the chat, or raise your hand, or let us know in the chat. Sarah would like to give a shout out to Ms. Martin, who are also in PE at Venable, doing rock star things. So all the teachers are. But I agree about the comment with respect to PE. I was really surprised at how creative they could be. So anybody else, Mr. Cuomo?
There's nobody else at this time.
Great. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at this time. Again, feel free to email us at charles, at school board, schoolboard@charlottesvilleschools.org. And we appreciate your comments. And also, yeah, on November 5th, we will also have two public comment periods as well. Okay, the next item on our agenda is board member comments. Mr. Bryant, I'm going to let him go first, if that's okay with the, the board. Go ahead, Mr. Bryant, if you have any comments or questions.
Um, I think I've stated all my comments. I do apologize at the wrong button instead of mute. So I do apologize for that. So I pretty much have stated all my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Ms. Bryson Worsberger, you, do you want to have, give a comments?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that it was a lot to take in, and that Dr. Atkins asked earlier what would help make the decision. And I'm just wondering if we can have, when you do come back with your proposal, because it could differ from what we've seen tonight in some ways. And this might go to the Madam Chair as well. But to have, it will be helpful to me that we get the presentation, and then we not have to vote on it immediately that night. And it would also be helpful to know the results of the survey before we vote, to know how many students or parents want to come back, and how many teachers are comfortable coming back. That would be helpful. And that's, those are all my comments.
Thank you. Okay, who do I see up here? Ms. Perrier?
Madam Chair, I think I've said everything I need to say. And just thank you again to everyone from the COVID committee, because I know it was parents and teachers and administrators, and, as we say in the community, everybody. So thank you to everybody for giving me all of this information to read and disseminate. And I look forward to what's next. And anything that I can do personally to help any of you on the committee, or any of you listening, or tuning in, feel free to reach out to me. You can email me, you can call me, as many of you do. And if you want to call me and you don't know how to reach me, there are a lot of people out here that do. So just reach out, and I promise I'll email you back, or I'll call you back. Thank-
Mr. Wade?
No comments.
Dr. Craft?
I just want to say that I am very proud of our division, and the work that we're doing. And, and I really, really, really appreciate all of you. So I want to say that. And on a positive note, I want to just let you know that during our meeting, my little granddaughter was born 5:21 PM. So I've been a tiny bit distracted, but baby and mom are doing well. My first grandchild.
That's amazing. Congratulations, Dr. Craft. Now you have us all smiling widely. And except for that you're- And except for that, you're frozen. I'm going to go to Dr. Ted Lisa, please.
Yeah, no doctor in the house, just, just a lady with lots of puppies, if anybody caught that. But I cannot compete with the new grandbaby, so congratulations. Yeah, just, just gratitude as always. Thank you for everybody's hard work. And like Ms. McKeever said, you know, I just, I do appreciate, and I want everybody to know that we do receive and, and comments and emails. So not everybody who emails shows up and public comment, but we do read those and, and look through that also. Thank you for community input and all the work behind the scenes, as always. Thank you.
Is that all the board members except for me? Yes. I wanted to, these are my comments, which I think are things I have gotten to say now several times. One, again, we didn't ask for this, none of us asked for this. I, again, I'm always impressed with what our division and our staff, just they constantly go above and beyond. And I really appreciate you all as a, as a collective and individually. We did not get into this, we did not ask for this. And yet you all have done really amazing work to get us to this point, which I'm really grateful for. I want to emphasize that between now and now and our next board meeting, super important things are happening. It's vitally important that you vote on Tuesday. Hold on, I'm going to find Tuesday, the 3rd. And, you know, the vacuum of leadership at the federal level is dramatic. And I just, I feel like if we had just even a slightly better leadership, we would have this, all of this would not necessarily have been necessary. So I really ask all of us in Charlottesville to vote. I also ask you to get the app COVID-wise. That app is perfect, it's very helpful for contact tracing. Another, you know, the, the state developed it. It's very important that we use it so that we can, so the Health Department can help us into know whether we've been exposed to the virus or not. And the more people that use it, the more effective it is. The flu shot is also something that the Health Department is recommending and is a really great time right now to get your flu shot. So please consider doing that for, especially if you're out and about. Wear a mask, wash your hands frequently. UVA is not coming back until February 1st. I have a real, I think we have a real opportunity here to make, to be able to get our kids back in school, at least temporarily, before the whole UVA thing happens again into our community. So I'm grateful that they're leaving at Thanksgiving and that coming back again until probably February 1st. And hopefully that will give us some opportunity to get some in-person instruction for our students, at least our younger ones, as soon as, you know, is, is practical, as soon as our buildings are ready and our staff is ready. So thank you to everybody. And I, that's all the comments I have. Dr. Atkins, do you have any comments?
Do have one question for the board. Ms. McKeever, is it the desire of the board that we get that intent survey out prior to our board meeting? And if it is the will of the board that we get that out ahead of the board meeting, I would suggest that we move the November 5th board meeting to the next Thursday to give us time to get it out and get the results back to present that to the board.
There's, I have a couple comments with that. I'm, I'm happy to work with you on that. I think the, having that information about what parents are willing to do and wanting to do, I think is, is very helpful for us. I think that having, understanding what your recommendation is going to be and then giving time to, to hear input from the public what your recommendation is, may also be helpful. So, and then finally, it might be helpful for our teachers when they're doing their parent teacher conferences to remind our parents to get their intent forms in. So that's, so my point is maybe we just have a fifth, a meeting on the 5th, and we have a meeting on the 10th or whatever, the 12th. One for the, the recommendation and then the vote be the following week, just to give time and space for discussion and also finalize, you know, the receipt of all of the surveys. What do you think about that?
That, that sounds good. If you and I can meet maybe next week, early part of next week, to just flesh out some of the details, that would be great.
I just want to also, yes, of course. And if anybody else has like a comment about that, you certainly can mention it now or just, you know, send me, you know, send me an email and let me know. Ms. Bryson Worsberger, do you think that would help with some of the concerns that you expressed? Okay.
Yes, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Not that we had to send out the survey immediately, but just that we had the results before we vote.
Sounds good.
I'd also like to thank everyone for the work you've done tonight. Just amazing, amazing teachers, the COVID Committee, all of the work groups, our co-chairs, your presentation tonight, and our principals, just an outstanding job. Also would like to encourage any of our staff, our teachers, our community members, if you have questions, I know that you will email the board. Please feel free to, questions or comments, to call, to email. Many of you have my number, you can text. The more information and input that we get in making this decision, the more ownership our community and our stakeholders will have of the decision that the board has to make. So I do encourage you to just keep communicating. None of this is easy. And we're trying to sort of chart our course as we go along. We didn't, as Ms. McKeever say, ask for COVID, but it is here and we have to react to it. So thank you for all of your help and we will get through this together. So thank you, Ms. McKeever.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Is Dr. King on the meeting to do a work session wrap-up? I mean, is that necessary?
Dr. Baptist is here and she's going to do the wrap-up.
Okay.
And I even remembered the name of it this time, Ms. McKeever. The wrap-up.
Okay, the items that I noted that you would want more information about, the procedures for preschool, I mean, how many students and the categories of students and teachers, more information about the testing capacity and how we might be able to do that. Protocols for closing, you know, working with the Health Department on that. Working to have playbook or about protocols to handle various things that we've talked about. Wanted to know about the mask refusal, how we will deal with that. And Mr. Bryant, we are working on that. We've had one draft of some regulations and we'll have an updated draft on that. Testing practices for outbreaks, whether it be for classes or schools, again, working with the Health Department on that. Maybe do a blast out or a gentle reminder to staff regarding their intent. Consider creative ways to help struggling students and including fine arts. And then that last question that you just discussed about the presentation, having it earlier and when to do the intent.
Dr. Baptist, that was remarkable. Thank you for getting all that down because we often forget. So I appreciate you doing that. Upcoming meeting, our next meeting is on November 5th at 5 o'clock on the Zoom. And yeah, that's the only meeting that I'm aware of between now and the 5th. Stay tuned for possible meetings after the 5th. And I just want to click, anybody have any comments or anything they need to say? Okay. And so I'm going to, hearing no objection, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Stay safe, everyone.
Bye, y'all. Thank you.